Okay, I have 5:30. Anthony, if you're ready, I have.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Heading. I have my devices rolling, and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is December the fourteenth, Tuesday, 2021. It's 5:30 PM. Tonight's meeting is being held via teleconference. And with that, I will ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Heading?
Present. Thank you. We do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. At pursuant to Executive Order Number N-0821 issued by Governor Newsom on June 11, 2021, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised at pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you. Good evening, and if we could take a moment of silence, especially remembering those whose homes and lives were so terribly taken by the tornado in Kentucky, and in your own way, we'll just take a moment of silence in remembrance of that, please. Thank you. Thank you for that, and if we can have our flag presented on the screen, I'll ask Councilmember Ford to lead us in the place this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Appreciate that very much. And with that, I will ask our city attorney, Mr. Newmeyer. Do we have a closed session report tonight, Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Great. Thank you, Chris. That moves us to council member and staff reports this evening. I'll start, and just want to put out an invite to our community that we have a number of advisory boards that have vacancies, and we will be receiving, hopefully, nominations from individuals interested in applying for those positions. The Harbor Advisory Board, the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, as well as the Recreation and Parks Commission have vacancies. The application period closes on January the 4th of 2022. That's just around the corner. And council interviews are tentatively scheduled for January the 11th. We just want to encourage individuals in our community to apply for any number of vacancies in these three different advisory boards or committees. The council considers them very important and appreciates the input that we receive from our advisory committees. The opportunities are listed on the city website in further detail, and also the Facebook page. Again, we have two positions for the Harbor Advisory Board that are available. The Park and Recreation Commission, there are two positions there. And our Citizens Finance Committee Advisory Committee, we have four vacancies available there. The application and eligibility information are available, as I said, on the city's webpage Or you can call the city clerk's office and get further information. Again, the deadline for submission is Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, at 5:00 PM, and interviews are scheduled for January the 11th, 2022. So if you need further information from council members, any council member, I'm sure, would be available to receive calls from anybody that might be considering any of these positions. We welcome your questions, and/or if you have questions about process and how the advisory bodies work, again, I think all of us would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We encourage our community to be involved in our city government. Thank you. That ends my announcements, and I'll turn to Councilmember Heller, sir, for your announcements.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank all city employees for their work all year round. A lot of times, people think that the elected officials run the city, but actually, we don't. We set policy, but the people keep the city operating day in and day out. Start with our city manager and all of our great employees, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for their work all year round, and I'm looking forward to 2022. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you for that recognition. I absolutely agree with that. And I'll turn to Councilmember Addis, please. Any announcements this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements. One is that on January 22nd, 2022, we're going to have the Engage for Equity Rally in San Luis Obispo at Mitchell Park, put on by Women's March San Luis Obispo, and the rally itself will be from 1:00 to 3:00. But we have our Call to Action Alley open from 12:00 to 4:00. And the Call to Action Alley is open to local nonprofits who want to engage for equity. So a number of them have signed up from years past, but if you're someone out there with a local nonprofit who wants to engage for equity, get the word out, meet new people, possibly new volunteers, then we invite you to contact us at womensmarslow@gmail.com. And then I also wanted to say that as part of the subcommittee, I was honored to join the mayor and a little bit of city staff to see the Vistra Moss Landing Battery Energy Storage Project yesterday. I think we were there, and it was really wonderful to get a real picture of what this project could be like and to have a concrete understanding of what it might look like, something similar in Morro Bay should we go down that road. So I want to say thank you for those that were able to join that tour or learned a lot on it. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. It was a great day yesterday, despite the rain, which was, on the way home, quite, quite strong. Councilmember Barton, please. Your announcements this evening.
Oh, I just want to add on to Councilmember Heller's comments about the city staff and congratulate those who received their recognition for 10 years, 15 years at the recent get-together. I wasn't able to be there. I was at another get-together at the same time, so I wasn't able to come, but I was so proud to see them. I remember my years in city government, and those years, as they ticked by, you really feel a great sense of pride in having done all the, you know, all the work that you've done over those years. So I'm pleased for them. There were about, I think, about a dozen or so.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Appreciate that. And Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo, you know, what Councilmember Heller, you know, started tonight as a thank you for, you know, all the services provided by our city staff, as well as our council members who work tirelessly, you know, year-round to bring about the best of Morro Bay and to make sure our city functions and that people have what they need to survive in our city. You know, just today in the downpour, right as I was seeing the flooding beginning to occur in my street, as it was creeping towards my home, and I'm going, oh, my gosh, like, it's getting higher and higher. As soon as I began to get worried, I looked outside, and there was a service truck pulled up, a city truck, and they were out there clearing the storm drains and making sure that, you know, the water was flowing properly. And, you know, it's just moments like that that just remind you of the service, the amazing service that our city provides. And so I'm very thankful for that. I do have one, like, and not really an announcement, but more of a report of, I took, you know, my family and I joined, we had the opportunity to join the Thanksgiving meal this year that took place at the community center that was put on by the Lions Club of Morro Bay. Really amazing event to be a part of. If you haven't in the past volunteered for this event or, you know, been able to eat the delicious meal that is provided every year. You know, there was over 700 meals provided to our community, thanks to the hard work that was put forth for all of our volunteers here, which included several different organizations. I mean, of course, the Lions Club was one, our police department here, the Explorers. We had Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We had just several different people from around the community that were there to pitch in. And it was a real, it was just an effort that, you know, just shows off the best of Morro Bay, what we're all about, and its community, and loving our neighbors, and doing what we can for them. So really, it was a blessing for me to be a part of this, this event. So I'm thankful that I was able to do that this year and to witness that, you know, the generosity from our community and all the donations that, you know, that they received from businesses and individuals in our city. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that. So that's pretty much it for me, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Appreciate that recognition as well. If you're wondering why I didn't mention our infamous high school football team during public comment, Principal Scott will be here, and I'm sure will sing to the accolades of the great accomplishments. So I'll hold off and let him give the kudos to our wonderful team. So with that, I'll turn to Mr. Collins. Any report from you, sir?
Yes. Hello, Mayor, councilmembers, and community members. I have a couple of staff presentations that should be relatively brief. One from Corlo Engineers regarding the forthcoming closure to South Bay Boulevard near Highway 1 intersection. So really important to get information out as soon as possible for the closure that's coming on December 27th. A lot of questions already coming from community members. So I'm glad that they're reaching out, and we're going to be putting information out on all of our channels to make sure people are aware of this. So I'll have Paul Amico speak to that. And I also have our Public Works Director, Greg Ballack, who's going to talk about the recent announcement by the state regarding water allocation of a 0%, or zero allocation for the recipients of the state water project, which just sounds very alarming, but there's a lot of nuance involved. So I'll start off with Paul Amico and as well as Sarah Rosseto, who's the communication arm of the Corlo team, to give a brief presentation on the South Bay Boulevard closure.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Collins, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate you having me here tonight. I wanted to just, I want to be brief about the conveyance update and really just focus in on the South Bay Boulevard closure, why we're doing it, and then what the community can expect. So I'm going to share my screen. I'll share a graphic on my screen here. So just so everyone's aware of what's going on, our contractor Anvil Builders is continuing to progress the pipelines down toward South Bay Boulevard in the intersection at Highway 1, or, I'm sorry, at South Bay Boulevard and Quintana. And the WRF site is just off the top of this graphic. So starting on December 27th, we need to fully close South Bay Boulevard between the Highway 1 ramps and Quintana. The original plan, and we recognize that the original objective that we had during all construction was that we would keep at least one lane of traffic open during construction, and that objective was generally set because we wanted to keep accesses to, access to homes and businesses. We can't cut access off. In this particular case, there are no driveways in this area. That's not exactly why we're doing it, but that was the first point of why we wanted to do that. The reason for the closure is, as Anvil progressed the pipelines down to this low area near this intersection, they began encountering ground conditions that we knew were going to be challenging for them, but they proved to be, to really impact production, and that's not necessarily the biggest point, but the bigger point is that we would, in order to progress the construction through that, what we call bad ground, they have to do some pretty extraordinary trench shoring methods. In order to keep traffic on South Bay Boulevard moving, we were going to have to use an alternating one-way traffic pattern through here to keep the lane on the east side of South Bay Boulevard open. And therefore, we'd be doubling the traffic volume on that lane. And because Anvil will be in some pretty bad ground in this area, by doubling that traffic volume, it takes an already challenging and pretty risky shoring situation that they're going to be facing. Their risk as they're doing this, because we're going to have a heavier traffic volume on that lane. And there was a risk that, we just didn't want to take, that we could potentially impact that roadway pretty severely, potentially collapse the road, which would pose a risk both to Anvil employees and then also the traveling public. So the closure is going to go into effect on December 27th. And I'll get to that in a minute and why we chose that date. And it'll extend for approximately eight weeks between Quintana and the ramps. After that time, as they progress the pipelines up under Highway 1 and toward the WRF site itself, we will be impacting these ramps, and we're currently in discussions with Caltrans on what those specific ramp closures might look like. Very concerned with getting traffic to and from Bayside Care Center in Casa de Flores here and also our, our construction traffic. So the specific impacts of these will be, that information will be forthcoming, and we'll be back with an update on that once we work out those details. But for now, it's eight weeks, starting on the 27th, Quintana to Highway 1 ramps. We chose the 27th because it is over Christmas break. And in discussing with a number of parents that we know around here, they felt like that was actually not a bad idea. One is it reduces the traffic volume, which we were, you know, obviously very keen to do. The second thing is it gives the parents a couple of weeks to get used to what this might be during school, so they don't just show up on the first day of school after the holiday and then have to navigate this intersection. So it gives the community and the school plenty of time over the Christmas break with a reduced traffic volume to take a look at what we've got, and also for Anvil to progress this work for two weeks without that high traffic volume. A couple of different points, and then I'll turn it over for questions. Our official detour route for northbound traffic going up Highway 1 to North Morro Bay would be to Quintana Road and up to Morro Bay Boulevard. And as people in the community obviously know, you can access southbound Highway 1 by going south on Quintana Road from that location. So with that, I will turn it over for any questions you all might have, and we go from there.
Yeah, Paul, could you just give a quick outline of all those we've reached out to to notify ahead of time and who we coordinated with?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We have been in contact with the county, with state parks, emergency responders. That includes police and fire, businesses on Teresa Road, Casa de Flores and Compass Healthcare, as we said, businesses on Quintana Road, the RV Park, the church, the mortuary, the Regional Transit Authority. We've reached out to CRESTA, the Unified School District Transportation. In fact, we just got a voicemail from them wanting to talk about the specific routes that the buses might take. We've contacted the high school, the Los Osos Middle School, Baywood, Delmar, and Monarch Grove Elementary School. So we know that this is a very important route for the community, and so we are being very proactive with our outreach. I've also reached out to Neil Farrell with Estero Bay News, and he and I have traded some emails and spoken on the phone, so he was planning on running a story later this week. And then I believe Sarah can confirm for me that we're also going to be running an ad in the Estero Bay News, letting everybody know. So we really want to get the word out on this, because we understand this is a very high traffic volume, and it's going to be pretty impactful. So one thing, as I always say, and everybody kind of chuckles, is please be patient and follow all our posted signage.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul?
I have one.
Yes, uh-huh. Councilmember Addis?
Yeah. Is there an estimated time, like, for traffic that has to go Quintana rather than the highway? I mean, I know there's the one-stop sign when you get to the top of Quintana, and then you either have to get on the highway or keep going on Quintana. That's one question. Like, how much longer will it take people? And I'm thinking parents, but I'm also thinking teachers. They drive from Los Osos to Morro Bay High, or drive from Los Osos to Delmar, or Morro Bay over to Los Osos.
So I think for that, it will obviously depend on what time people go. We anticipate that going home, which obviously is less concerning for parents than coming to school, I would anticipate, and I would plan for at least five to 10 additional minutes to get through, just because of the, one thing that everyone needs to know is if you're coming from North Morro Bay and you exit at Morro Bay Boulevard, which is our detour route, we need to push all of that traffic through the roundabout. Because that cut across Quintana, we're actually going to barricade that and prevent that movement, because that will be a very risky movement, and we would risk backing up Highway 1 because of that. So we're going to move all the traffic through the roundabout and out Quintana. Then the stop sign, obviously, Quintana and South Bay Boulevard. During working hours, which is also school hours, we'll have a flagger down there, and we can actually, I think, flag traffic through there and keep it moving. So I would plan five to 10 extra minutes, though, initially, and...
So no, no right turn to get onto the highway at the top of Quintana?
Oh, yeah, there will be at the top of Quintana, at Morro Bay Boulevard.
Well, there, you come up Quintana, and then you hit a stop sign, and then you either turn right, and that takes you towards the highway, or you turn left towards, across traffic towards the roundabout. And I'm just, I'm just wondering about that intersection that happens before the roundabout, and if there will be anything to alleviate traffic at that stop sign, especially for people on their way to school.
Their way to school, if you are, oh, for parents coming from Los Osos and heading to the high school. So that right turn movement will be the, obviously, the preferred movement that we would have. We're going to keep the left turn open right there for anybody who happens to be coming up at that time and wants to go into downtown. We can't cut that, that traffic off. So parents heading to the high school, and they'll be able to make that right turn and get on Highway 1, or you could take the left and go into downtown. Obviously, we'll be monitoring that area to make sure that that left turn traffic doesn't hold up people getting to the highway, because there is that risk there, because it's a pinch point. I actually am going to be on-site that first part of, that first week of the closure, and I'm going to go to that intersection and observe how that goes as we do that.
Thank you for that. And then there's a couple of charter schools. I just Googled it, because I couldn't remember the names, but Family Partnership Charter, Wishing Well, and Heartland Christian. And I just want to request that there's also outreach to those, because there are, I know there's students who probably travel back and forth, and families and teachers that travel back and forth at those same hours.
I believe Sarah's on as well, so I believe, as she would have noted those, and we'll make sure we get in touch with them. And if there's any else that we may have left off the list that you all think, please send it through our normal communication channels, and we'll make sure we reach out to them over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Addis. And Paul, I didn't get a chance to look, but has the website been updated with this information as of today?
I believe we are.
Sarah's nodding. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great.
We have been in pretty frequent communication over this, over the last several...
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Greg Ballack for a very brief presentation. Thank you.
Welcome, Greg.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Hopefully, you can all see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, so quick update. Usually, this time of year, we receive notice from the state as to what our water allocation will be. As you all know, currently, state water is our main water supply. And so sometimes the allocation is 100%, sometimes it's 5%, as it has been this past year, 50%. This year, it's not quite zero, even though we think of it as zero. For this coming year, the allocation is minimum human health and safety. And what that means is the state will be giving 55 gallons per capita per day for water purveyors without sufficient supply. We actually don't meet this standard, so we are not eligible to receive that 55 gallons per capita per day, because Slow County has sufficient supply and storage. And just as any year, the state does change their allocation over time, depending on rain or snowpack. So we have been given conservative allocations in December at times, and then the Sierras get a lot of snow, and later in the year, the state tells us that our allocation increases. So that may happen this coming year. We don't know. But as of right now, we are not anticipating receiving any water from the state for the calendar year 2022. That sounds drastic, and it certainly is. However, currently, our water supply, at least for the next two years, looks pretty good. And that's because Slow County holds enough carryover storage in San Luis Reservoir to meet local subcontractors, such as Morro Bay, demand for at least the next two calendar years. And they have carryover storage, because that's something that Slow County purchases from the state and has available for cases like these. So again, there is no threat to our water supply for at least two years, but it's certainly something that city staff and the Public Works Department is going to be monitoring. And then finally, water conservation. We are still at the severely restricted water supply conditions, so that regulates how many times a week you can water your lawn and what hours per day. It prohibits cleaning hardscape with water and things like that. All of those regulations are available at the website listed there. The easiest way to get there is just Google "Morro Bay water conservation", and it'll probably come up as the first item. So I'll take any brief questions. There is no action tonight for City Council on this, but I just want to give you all an update.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Any questions of Greg? Okay. Appreciate that, Greg. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, back to you, sir.
Thank you. That was all for staff presentations. If you'd like me to move on to the next segment?
Please do. This is our presentations for service pin, presentation to employees who were recognized for their years of service. And Mr. Collins, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers and members of the public. One of my more favorite things to do in the city. I love my job, but this is one of my most favorite parts of it, is to honor city staff who've reached kind of milestone years of service with the city, beginning with their 10th year, and 15th, and 20th, 25th, and so forth, and so on. Last year, we weren't able to have a true kind of Morro Bay holiday party like we've had in the past, but we were able to do that city employee party this past week outside, of course, honoring all the COVID restrictions. We invited all the council members, and I think all but one were able to come, because the other four had other things going on, very important things they were carrying out with their work or other, other duties. But we appreciate Councilmember Heller was able to come and speak to the staff and also participate in the cookie contest, judging contest. Hope you recovered since then, Councilmember Heller.
I think in a couple of days, but I think my stomach is back to normal. Thank you.
Yeah. We appreciate the sentiment shared by all five of you about the great work of our staff. Obviously, the last year and a half has been, you know, very challenging for everybody in our community. I think Morro Bay has really risen to the occasion, from volunteers, regular community members, our business community, to chamber nonprofits, as well as city staff and city council, rising to the occasion and doing more and more and more with less, you know. And we want to take a moment to thank them, and so we had a party. We felt really good about it. We're going to share a video of those who were able to come, they met the milestones, and then we'll share a little bit about those who weren't able to attend, who are milestone years this year. And just forewarning, we do like to have fun in the city, so you may hear some jokes in the presentation. We don't take ourselves seriously, but we take our work very seriously. So hopefully, that shines through. So with that forewarning, I will turn it over to Mr. Dan Swanson to run the video, and then I'll conclude after that.
Everybody. The last time we ran the DMS was 2019, in December, down the waterfront. And it was a few months later, everything changed for us.
And it was a few months later, everything changed for us and we didn't go deep in that. We all, we all suffered through it, but I, I just want to say how much I appreciate you all stepping up. Great pandemic, here comes downs, layoffs, and they come. Go back and, uh, cool as her, wear a mask, go wear a mask, vaccine, go get a vaccine. We appreciate you, we, we, we all, uh, just being amazing employees for our community. So good, but segueing to our employee and service pin, so let's, uh, let's, uh, pass it. Jeremiah Jacobs with the Harbor Department, take care. Come on up here, buddy. Uh, there you go. Well, uh, so you've been with the Stacey's, you kind of live on, uh, the Beach Lifeguard. You just came from your boss about to put something. Uh, Jeremiah came to the Harbor Department through several agencies as a beach lifeguard and in his homeworks, heavily working on a base game. Became a reserve harbor officer in August 2012, a full-time officer to their team. So this is again, one of us. Uh, often portraying his coworker is sarcastic, considering Jeremiah's department's pride created project master. Understand the fixing of everything, a large but light control. Over the last two seasons has managed to find her supervisor, which are. Thank you, Jeremiah. We hope you're with it without it. I've been with the city for 10 years, does a corporate evidence technician with the department. Seems to know about the city, you know, from, from 2011. Um, you know, I've been staffed with police, also the entire community, but you have pulled the whole thing together. We appreciate all the hard work you do, hard to keep track of all the new laws making in the downtown state. So, and this is, we're doing. My sources in this part. So Don has been with the city for 10 years, I see. Well, so, yeah, Dave, you got the beach gear, this gear, this department, I want you proud, you would like it, public, yeah. And Michael, look at that. And so I think, so many, I appreciate it. Well, we ran into some, uh, audio challenges during the presentation. Sorry about that. But, um, we really appreciate the opportunity to, to share our love of our employees with, with City Council and our community. Um, so just really quickly run through the names, Michael Hosey's 10-year with the fire department. Jeremiah Jacobs, 10 years with Harbor. Donna Clean, 10 years of fire. Uh, Tammy Ponder, 10 years with police. Dan Stein, 15 years with the Harbor Department. Uh, Gene Stewart, 15 years with police and Robert Trout, uh, 25 years with the Public Works Department. And so we, we cherish all of our employees, especially those who are with us for a long time. And so, uh, thanks so much for, for allowing us to share that with you all tonight.
Hey, thank you, Scott. And, you know, I totaled it up. It's 95 years of service for seven people. That's amazing. You know, um, these days, most folks entering the workforce will have, um, six different careers. Statistics tell us not jobs, but careers in their lifetime. So to see this kind of longevity and service is amazing. And we, um, as a city council, I'll, I'll just speak for the council, um, so appreciate, um, the dedication, the hard work. Um, and, and through adversity, um, with regard to what's going on with the pandemic and the challenges that we've faced, um, we just really so appreciate, um, everybody hanging in there, um, doing, uh, extra things, working harder and, uh, uh, just serving the city in the capacity that you do. Uh, thank you so much from the City Council as well, Mr. Collins. Um, if you ever wear that Bahambug sweatshirt again or sweater, um, it will be a disciplinary action. I share that. So thanks again to all our employees. Very much appreciated. Any comments from anybody? It's like echoes and we agree. Okay. Thank you. That'll bring us to public comment. This is, um, general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay and you'd like to speak to now or any items, um, of general nature that you'd like to address to the city. Couple of ways to access public comment. One is to join via the Zoom webinar link noted on the screen. And the other is to call in with the phone number noted on the screen and use the raised hand or star nine, uh, function on your phone. And so again, this is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay or any general comments for the city. And I will go ahead, Anthony, and open up public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Heding. Uh, currently I am going to unmute Scott Schaldi.
Thank you, Principal Schaldi. Welcome. And I know you have some announcements for us, so take it away, sir.
Hi there. Uh, nice to see you again, Mayor. It was great to meet with you. I'd like to say that my name is Scott Schaldi. I'm the new principal at Morro Bay High School and I couldn't be more excited about the opportunity to, uh, to work with our students, our staff and our community to make Morro Bay High School a great school. Uh, I, I couldn't be more excited. Uh, a little about me, I'm, this is my 27th year as an educator. I was a teacher for 17 years, 11 of them at the middle school level, six of them at the high school level. Specifically, I was a teacher at Morro Bay High School from 2005 to 2011. I, uh, I really, I've been an administrator now. This is my, uh, my 10th year as administrator. But it's my first time being a principal. As I come to Morro Bay High School, I've tried to share with our staff that I have five key overarching goals I want all of us to be committed to. Uh, number one is that every, uh, every student, the relationship we create and cultivate with them, that's our number one, number one goal. If we don't know our students, how can we best serve them? And certainly knowing our students keeps our school safe. Uh, right after that, we talk about the fact that every student deserves rigor, relevance and support. In our classrooms, we focus on mastery, not memory. Kids need to be able to think and do. Uh, and no student at Morro Bay High School is an SCP. An SCP is someone else's problem. Nobody's a someone else's problem. A student who might be an English language learner is not the problem of the English language development teacher. All our kids are all our kids and we love them all. And lastly is just, hey, we're a team. We work as a team. And the reception I've gotten, uh, from our students, staff and our community has been exceptional and I'm grateful. I feel like I've fallen out of the lucky tree. Uh, I know that Morro Bay High School has faced, you know, a array of, of issues in the past, but we're working and striving again to make Morro Bay High School a great school. I want to say the reception for the city's been, been amazing. The first person I met was, uh, was Scott Collins and I was grateful to have a meeting with him. Uh, there we go. I, uh, I've also met Jody Cox. I briefly met the Chief of Police. I certainly had a chance to sit down with our mayor and have a conversation. And I've known Don Addus for a long time and I'm excited about that, uh, extending that conversation. I look forward to meeting, uh, you know, Jeff and Jennifer and Laurel. And lastly is of course about, we've been in the news about football, but I want to address all sports. I have 30 seconds. Uh, girls volleyball, lost to the eventual CIF champions. Girls water polo, lost in the championship. And then our boys won the first CIF championship since 95. We won the regional state championship and we, uh, were runner-up at the state level this weekend up in Fall River, which is, if you want to know, is 499 miles away. We couldn't be more excited about our sports programs, especially our football team. And I appreciate the chance to come in and introduce myself tonight. Thank you.
Scott, thank you so much. It was a pleasure meeting with you and we look forward as a city to a long lasting relationship with you and your staff. And thanks that, uh, for all that you do for our kids at the high school. Appreciate you greatly, sir.
Thank you.
Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Heding. Next is Chris Rudebush.
Okay.
Okay, he should be unmuted.
Hello, good evening. This is Chris Rudebush and I'm representing the We Are the Care Initiative. As 2021 comes to a close, we have taken some time to reflect back on the progress that has been made throughout this year. While solving the childcare crisis must remain a top priority, many promising steps have been taken to support children and families in Slow County in addition to the early care professionals who, who serve them. Tonight we hope to highlight one such success. The launch of the Family Friendly Workplace Accelerator position through the Slow Chamber of Commerce. With funding from First Five and the county of Slow, the program has hit the ground running. Christina Latner is heading up the Family Friendly Workplace Accelerator Program as its workforce development manager. Since the launch of the program in October, she has met with more than 20 businesses and organizations countywide to promote the advantages of becoming more family friendly and discuss how they can join the movement. The program is open to provide source, uh, resources and support for any business throughout the county interested in exploring, implementing and/or expanding family friendly workplace practices in order to attract and sustain a strong inclusive workforce. The program is provided to businesses free of charge and is built on the belief that increasing family friendliness is essential to support business success, grow our economy and to advance diversity, equity and inclusion in the workforce. Research indicates that family friendly employers benefit from reduced employee health costs, lower absenteeism and more resilient, happier and healthier employees. Implementation of these policies will enhance the community overall and help to reduce the negative impacts the childcare crisis has on our local workforce. If you're interested in, uh, in, interested businesses can start by assessing our Family Friendly Workplace Toolkit at slowfamilyfriendlywork.org and then they could sign up to get involved by contacting Christina at the Slow Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Christina is instrumental in the creation of the initial toolkit and we know she will remain an essential part of the movement to better support children and families in Slow County. For more ways to get involved with We Are the Care, please contact First Five Slow County or go to www dot firstfiveslow.org. Thank you so much for your time and we'll be back again in 2022 with more information and updates.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Betty Windholtz with her hand raised. Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Windholtz. Um, I have two topics I'd like to, uh, raise. Um, one has to do with, um, what was going on in your closed session, which I assume was the selling of, uh, the teen center, the, um, skateboard place. Um, we bought that, we being the city bought that when I was on city council. And we made that part of our, our regular city council meeting. We took input from people to see if we should buy the property, if so, how we should use it. And when we went from being, um, you know, just a teen center and then adding the skate park, that was all a public discussion. And what, what I've perceived is that this, um, negotiation, though it's been announced, hasn't really asked for or gotten public input. And so I, I'm hoping that in the future, when you deal with public property, that you would bring it to council and involve and invite, uh, the public to comment on how you're using their property and whether or not you should sell it. Um, my second point has to do with, um, this, um, appellate case that's being, uh, you, uh, who sent me as, as I asked, and I appreciate that, a copy of a case that's being used to alter how, um, the city is addressing public comment for city council and other meetings. And I am definitely not an attorney, but in gl- reading over that, I, I could not see the link between why this is an issue for Morro Bay, since we seem to be actually more open than the case was, the, the, the city that was being adjudicated. And so if you could explain or have the city attorney explain, uh, how this is relevant, that would be helpful. Um, cause I'm not seeing the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Um, next public comment, Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor Heding. Uh, I see Michael Aaron Woody with the hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, you should be unmuted.
Yeah. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome, Michael.
Hey, welcome. Hey, it's an absolute honor to be here. Very quickly, before I start this, um, I just want to make sure. I'd like to, um, read some comments about item C5 in regards to the marine sanctuary issue that's going on. And I was wondering if it would be appropriate, if I could just simply do the comments right now or would you like me to wait until item C5 comes up?
See, you can do it now.
Uh, doing it now would actually be very convenient for me. Trust me on that. So it would be appreciated.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. If you wouldn't mind, I know the clock has already started, but if you could give me the full three minutes on this, I'd really appreciate it.
We'll continue as we're going here. Go ahead.
Okay, no problem with that. All right. Good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Aaron Woody and I've been authorized to speak on behalf of the Salina Tribe of San Luis Obispo and Monterey County here tonight. Just two very quick, very brief issues for you tonight to take under consideration. Number one, we greatly appreciate your understanding that this comment period for this particular item really needs to be extended. The timing during the holidays, as well as the recent announcement of the new COVID restrictions has put all of us in a bit of a rushed and scrambled mood for this marine sanctuary project. We strongly support your position to have more time to fully understand this proposal and what it means to not only for tribal heritage, but for our community as well. Secondly, the city of Morro Bay has had a long, uh, record of supporting the rights and heritage of the true indigenous cultures of the region. For that, we are very appreciative. As has been presented, the marine sanctuary name, the Chuash Heritage National Museum, does not fully represent the true tribal diversity of the central coast from the northern part of San Luis Obispo County down to the southern part of Santa Barbara County. It's unacceptable for federal government to name a marine sanctuary that covers, by their own admission, by the way, multiple tribal regions for only one particular indigenous heritage. The Salina tribe will only recognize those tribes that have either been fairly recognized or demonstrated a clear blood lineage to active Native Indians here in San Luis Obispo County. For example, for myself, I'm a true mission Salina Indian, not because I say so, but because I have been personally certified by the U.S. Department of Interior with my CDIV number of Salina Indian blood. I appear on the 72 California Indian judgment roll as a Salina Indian, as my parents and grandparents and great-grandparents all appear on the 72, 48 and 48 judgment roll, the 28 California Indian census, the 1905 Kelsey census, as well as baptized as Native Indians at the San Miguel Mission and born at the San Antonio Mission. at the San Antonio Mission. To put it simply, being a Native Indian is not a box that you simply check. You are all documented and accounted for. We ask that you, as a government officials, to begin to understand that when you allow individuals to claim an indigenous heritage in which there's no record of, that you are continuing a long line of a cultural genocide that has been going on for the last hundred and seventy years in California. So tonight, we ask that in your comments to NOAA, that you also include your desire to have a name that is not only more inclusive of all tribal Indians, but that they begin to realize the damage that they are causing by not simply doing basic research to actually verify who the true indigenous people are of any given region. And this also includes all of you here in this meeting. We know that many of you, if not all of you here tonight, truly care about all of us, but we ask that you begin to stand up for the truth, even when it means standing up against those who you think are your friends, acquaintances, or political allies. After centuries of abuse, my family truly does deserve it. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I see Lori Vaccaro French with the hand raised.
Okay.
Lori, you should be unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Lori French, and I just wanted on record that I oppose the proposed marine sanctuary on so many levels, but I'll be brief. We already have four national marine sanctuaries in the state of California, and we don't need more. The proposed sanctuary, grandfather's in Diablo Canyon, excludes the wind farm, and grandfather's in the existing oil rigs that are in the boundaries, which is exact opposite of what they proposed to do. I would like to recommend that you support the recommendations from the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Association, of which you should all have copies of. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Um, Anthony, next public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Melanie Williams Mahan with her hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Melanie.
Hi, thank you. Um, as you know, I'm on the cloisters design committee, and I just received the coastal commissioner's notification of appeal for twenty-seven eighty-three Coral Avenue. And I realized that this council and city planner may not understand the uniqueness of the closters, nor how relevant the design committee actually is. I don't know if our city planner has a copy of our design guide, guidelines, but it is on the, uh, city website. And the applicant seems to be under the impression that it is only up to the city to approve projects in the cloisters. I really hope he wasn't misled by this council or the city planner. I have one job on the design committee, and that is conformity with the existing neighborhood. The design committee is up to, is to be in on every aspect of this new build from planning to building. Our city planner seems to believe that we have no such authority. If that were the case, I don't think this appeal letter would be in my hands right now. I know that some of you up there think we are not to be treated differently than the rest of Morro Bay. I would encourage all of you up there to look at the history of the closters and their cooperation with the California Coastal Commission. Our design committee was put in place because of an agreement between the developers, the city, and this coastal commissioner, commission. I would be willing to sit down with any of you and point out the documentation that gives the design committee our authority. Please understand that we live here and we take our duty seriously. I urge you to allow us to follow the guidelines set up for any build by the city, the coastal commission, and the original developer of the cloisters. We just bought homes in the cloisters, we did not come up with these guidelines. We are just abiding by them, and I would hope that you all would, would do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Um, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, I thank you, Mayor. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close general public comment, bring it back to the council, just, um, go ahead and answer a couple of questions that were brought up this evening. First, uh, Ms. Windholtz, you can be assured, um, as per proper protocol and law-
Mayor Heading, I'm sorry, this is Anthony-
You sounded like I was nervous, didn't I?
Hello?
Right, right when I said I didn't see any raised hands, Jeremiah O'Brien raised his hand, am I okay to unmute him?
All right, I'll go ahead and hold my comment and allow him to speak.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mayor. He did it right as I was saying it, so-
That's fine, no worries. Jeremiah, go ahead, please.
Okay, Jeremiah, you should be muted.
Can you hear me, Mr.? Yes. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Uh, my name is Jeremiah O'Brien, and I'm here tonight as Vice President of Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization. Uh, we did have a video that I was hoping to see presented, uh, here at this time, but perhaps it will be when C five comes up, as this is related to it. Uh, we read in your agenda the, uh, recommendations on C five from the city staff, and I, uh, want to applaud them for, for the recommendation, and I hope the council will adopt it. We are sending the same, basically the same type of, uh, letters, uh, letter to NOAA, and, uh, it will include the things that we would like to see if we ever end up with a sanctuary. And we have a list recommended for the proposed sanctuary, and, uh, I hope that we have supplied you with what we are sending. Uh, our list includes many things that we have seen over the years, as you know, we've been, well, all of us here have been fighting this for twenty-five years, and Morro Bay has a history of opposing, of course, now we're faced with perhaps, uh, perhaps the sanctuary being first on us, I would say, but, uh, in any case, the asks that we have for the sanctuary are very, very similar to the ones the Hubbard Masters have been asking for probably fifteen or twenty years now, and the sanctuary has never reacted to those. So it'll be interesting to see how many of, what we would like, how much of what we would like to see is ever, uh, put on the sanctuary rules. In any case, also, before I go, I'd just like to say that, uh, prior speaker, Mr. Michael Woody, was very eloquent, and to us in the, in the fishing business, we have always kind of chuckled at, at the, the federal government's lack of understanding the tribes in an area. It just, it bothers the mind that the Salinans, uh, have not been mentioned in this sanctuary issue, it's crazy. Uh, Michael, they had a great job and, uh, very eloquent. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will go ahead and close public comment. Anthony, anybody else, by the way?
Uh, I'm gonna go right now and say that I do not see any raised hands left in the queue, and I don't see any raised hands left in the queue still.
Great, thanks, I'll go ahead and close public comment, um, for good this time, and a couple of comments, and then, um, ask for a couple of responses. First, um, with regard to Ms. Windholtz's statement regarding closed session, um, she used the word "her perception," I assume it is a perception, it was a closed session, so whatever information that was discussed was not available to the public. And certainly, um, this city, um, at least as long as I've been on the city council, as far as I know, forever, um, has never, um, sold anything without bringing it to the public and having public comment discussion before those decisions were made. So I can reassure Ms. Windholtz that, um, no action, um, like that would be taken during a closed session, nor has it, and nor will it in the future. And Chris, one more time, could you very briefly, briefly address the issue that Ms. Windholtz raised regarding the governor's, um, issue, um, with regard to public comment?
Sure. Ms. Windholtz, uh, I believe was referring to, uh, the Sierra Watch, uh, court decision that was published a few months ago, and is having a ripple effect among public agencies on how staff distributes public records received less than seventy-two hours before a Brown Act body meets. Um, this decision took arguably a strict interpretation of Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven-point-five, and so, uh, a lot of public agencies are now starting to, um, take a look at their practices and procedures for just the practice of staff distribution of public records to Brown Act bodies seventy-two hours or less before they meet. Um, to be clear, uh, members of the public, uh, continue to be able to send correspondence directly to any Brown Act body. Um, staff's working on a policy right now that should be in place by the next regular city council meeting, and, um, of course, you know, members of the public can make public comment, but this is a court-driven, um, response by the city. And I suggested to city staff that, uh, we revisit and take a look at our policies and come up with a written policy to make sure we're in compliance with this court decision from late August, um, of this year.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate the, um, update on that once again. With that, the items regarding C five, we'll certainly entertain when we get to C five. I've, I've made some notes, and, um, we'll bring them up at that time. Um, we'll go ahead and move to item A on our agenda this evening. This is the consent agenda. Um, public comment is now open for consent items A one through A eleven. Um, this is the consent agenda only. Public comment is open for the consent agenda. And Anthony, do we have any public comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Heading. I do see Betty Windholtz with her hand raised. Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted. Are you there, Betty? I'm unmuting you.
Thank you, I, I, it's now unmuted. Um, this is Betty Windholtz again. Um, I want to speak to A eleven, which was your acknowledgement of the former city council member, uh, Melody DeMerrit, who served back in the early two thousands, um, and for the kind words that were stated about her. Um, just a little further information, she was, um, even more of an environmentalist, if that's possible, than I am, and she, uh, strived hard to get the city at that time to adopt things that seem commonplace now, like electrical vehicles, um, reduction of pesticides on the parks and, and our play areas, um, the cleanup that we're experiencing now, you know, she would physically also go out and help with cleanup and, and the beaches and, and the creeks and everywhere, and the sand spit. So, um, I think maybe she was, uh, uh, not ahead of her time in terms of ideas that were good and positive, but certainly ahead of where the city was moving at that time. So I just want to acknowledge, uh, her, uh, publicly, and appreciate that she's being acknowledged tonight. Um, I also would like to speak to A seven and ask the question about, um, when you look at paragraph, um, let's see if I can close this. Um, are the third paragraph, uh, under the discussion, and it lists, uh, the sentence, uh, is quote, "As a result of the low rates and the ongoing liquidity, uh, needed for the WRF project, staff plans to more comprehensively evaluate investment options when the WRF project nears completion." So I'm wondering if we could have some comment on, um, if there is an issue with, uh, uh, flow of the money, um, at this cash on hand that's needed. Um, I noticed that in the item that's coming up later, that there was a decision that, at this point, we don't need to go for a bridge loan, but, uh, maybe, um, is, if and when there's a concern about, do we have the cash flow for this project? And, um, thank you.
Thank you, Betty, and thank you for your recognition of, um, former, um, council person, Melody DeMerrit. We appreciated, uh, the added comments and commentary. For those of us that weren't around then, um, I appreciated your recognition of that, so thank you for that. Um, Anthony, next public comment.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Heading. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you, I'll close public comment on the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and, uh, pull A seven to allow Sarah to give a brief, um, explanation on cash flow and where we are now with regard to that and our investment policy. And, um, unless there are other items to pull, any other items to pull? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, um, all items except for A seven.
I'll move to approve all items except A seven.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis, seconded by Councilmember Barton, to approve, um, all consent items except for A seven. Any further discussion?
I have one comment, Mayor.
Yes, please.
I am glad we are recognizing former council member DeMerrit. Um, she was a supporter of Women's March San Luis Obispo, um, supported me personally, and it was a huge honor to have that support. And I would agree with Betty that the work that she did for the council really was forward thinking, and I want to appreciate that.
Thank you, Captain Member Addis. Seeing no other comments, um, go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
You're muted, Lori.
She's having trouble unmuting? Maybe it thumbs up? Uh, yes?
I can't see your face, because you don't have a camera on either. Let's go ahead and finish, and I'll, we'll come back.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great, thank you. Um, A seven I pulled, maybe I can just ask Sarah Johnson-Rills if you can give us just a brief answer, uh, to Betty's question regarding cash flow and the investment policy? Thank you.
Melanie, good evening. Um, the investment policy, um, is, the, the, I'm sorry, the, um, investment report before you tonight is the quarterly investment report, and all the information in there is consistent with the city's investment policy. Language about, uh, considering the current investments more comprehensively after the WRF project is over is not referring to the bridge financing conversation, it's referring to, um, ensuring that we maintain liquidity overall with our funds during the duration of the WRF project, um, especially during the current fiscal year when the construction is at its peak. Um, and so, as Ms. Windholtz mentioned, there is more discussion about the bridge financing conversation and the WRF quarterly item before you tonight.
Thank you, Sarah, appreciate that very much. With that, I'll go ahead and move approval of A seven.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heading, seconded by Councilmember Addis to approve A seven. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you for that. That brings us to item B. This is our public hearing for the evening. This is the review and adoption of the draft funding recommendations for the twenty-twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program. And, um, again, uh, the public hearing, uh, will start with a staff presentation, then council questions and answers. Then I will open up the public hearing, move to public comment. After public comment, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to, uh, council for action and discussion. Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to, um, I believe, Cindy Jason. Cindy, welcome.
Thank you, uh, thank you, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I do have a presentation, so I will share that screen with you right now. Okay, so there it is. And, uh, this is, as the mayor said, this is the draft funding recommendations for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is a federal funding program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, the city receives an annual entitlement, uh, yearly, uh, due to its participation in the Urban County Consortium. Uh, that is a group that includes most of the cities and the county of San Luis Obispo. And funding for this year's, um, here we go, funding for this year's, um, program is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Uh, the notice of funding availability was released in late September, applications were due by November first, and during this process, the city received two applications. As, as part of the process, each jurisdiction, um, is required to make draft funding recommendations, uh, to be forwarded to the county board of supervisors, and that is followed by a second public comment period with final funding recommendations made by each jurisdiction in early twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, this year, um, as I said, we did receive two applications for funding in the public services activity category. activity category. Those two applications were from People's Self-Help Housing and Five Cities Homeless Coalition. The city did award some funding to People's Self-Help last year, so this application should be familiar. It is an application that would provide clinical social services and supportive services to residents of the four affordable rental developments that are located in the city of Morro Bay. The Five Cities Homeless application, Five Cities Homeless Coalition application, will provide funding for continued homeless services, emergency rental payment assistance, and homeless prevention services. We did receive public correspondence on this item that questioned why the staff recommendation here was not for more money, especially given the city's goals to address housing issues. And I just wanted to clarify this. The amount requested is more than what's being recommended, not because of worthiness or lack of priority, but simply it's due to federal regulations. Unfortunately, the city is capped by regulations that limit us to awarding no more than 15% of our annual allocation toward public services. So these two categories are what's considered a public service activity, and because the city's annual allocation is so small that equates to a maximum amount available of $8,648. And so that, that's the amount that we're working with. Subtracting out for administrative costs, as you see at the bottom of the screen, that leaves an available balance of $37,000 approximately. Unfortunately, no applications were received for eligible, for an eligible category for that amount, which actually is a first for the city in the 10 years that we've been in this program. So therefore, staff's recommending that this balance be rolled over to the next funding year in order to allow us to leverage with the 2023 funding year. Staff did reach out to the county of San Luis Obispo because this did happen actually with two other cities in the jurisdiction where they didn't receive enough applications. So one thing to note with this recommendation, and as explained further in the staff report, the city's agreement with the county and HUD requirements require that the minimum public service award be $8,000 or more. And as you can see, the amount recommended is less than 8,000. But after consulting with the county staff on this, staff's recommendation is to award both of these applications, even though they're less than 8,000, based on prior funding history with both of these organizations who have been funded in past years. So this can be allowed if the cumulative award county-wide is a minimum of 8,000. And so in order to fund both, the People's Self-Help application, which helps existing developments in the city, and then also provide the requested funding by Five Cities Homeless Coalition, they have made an application to every city in the county that participates. Staff's recommendation is listed here as shown on the screen. That would, though, leave an unallocated balance, and so staff's recommendation is that that be rolled over, as I stated. And that leads me to the recommendation as stated. It would be to fund the two applications, fund the city administration application at $4,036, and then roll over the remaining allocation to be leveraged for next year's funding allocation. And then the second half of that staff recommendation would be to authorize the city manager to make any pro-rata adjustments based on final congressional action. Typically, that's a de minimis amount that if it does change, once we get final congressional action. And that would conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Hey, Cindy, thank you for the staff report and the very succinct presentation. You answered the two questions I had, so I'm going to defer to other council members. I see Councilmember Barton's waving that hand in the, in my face. Councilmember Barton, please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to raise it in your face.
No, no, no. I'm just kidding.
Cindy, I had a question for you, and that is, the money that is going to roll over to next year, does it have to be spent in a certain category? Will it be for similar services like this, this year? Or can it be combined with other monies and turned into something else? Like, I was thinking in terms of, you know, maybe another, what do I want to say, another house in Morro Bay? Or something, something like that versus the, the services? The array of services is amazing what's offered by these two agencies. I'm just curious whether we are locked into that, that same spending next year.
We are not. So next year, we would have that same percentage requirement that's applied to us, which is this year's funds added to next year's funds. We'd be limited to no more than 15%. If you recall, last year, we gave, we had rollover funds last year, and we gave a large amount to the 35-unit affordable rental development in Morro Bay. So that was a good thing. We didn't have a project like that ready for this year. The city has also funded ADA accessibility improvements, and we did have some conversations with the Public Works Department about putting together an application to provide for some public facility improvements. That's an eligible category under CDVG, and it's not subject to the 15% cap. Much of the sidewalks in the, in the downtown area about five years ago were done specifically with CDVG money. So we do have flexibility.
Great.
Except in the public service category. That's the one area where we're limited.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Other questions? Seeing no hands, I'll go ahead and open up public comment and open up the public hearing. This is item B-1. Public comment is now open on item B-1. And Anthony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Michael, I'm going to try to pronounce the last name, Esavito, with his hand raised.
Okay.
Okay, Michael.
Welcome, Michael.
Be unmuted.
Good evening. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes, Michael. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the recommendation. I'm here representing the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. I am our housing, housing program manager. I just wanted to make the point for this recommendation that while Five Cities is in our name, Five Cities Homeless Coalition provides housing assistance countywide. We are requesting funds for the CDVG grant from each jurisdiction as a demonstration of our countywide efforts by Five Cities Homeless Coalition, and are hoping to strengthen our partnership with Morro Bay by applying for these funds. You will notice that it is a fairly modest request, where we are only asking for $900, which would represent only 10% of our, of the public service allocation. We do hope that with those public services, we would like to have the motion be to allocate 10% of all available public services in case the award amount is increased by HUD. While the threshold for the CDVG contract is $10,000 from all jurisdictions as a county, Five Cities Homeless Coalition does have commitments to meet that threshold requirement based on our applications and commitments from other jurisdictions. I would like to just kind of point out the folks that we provide as the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. So we do help a lot of single-parent households. It's about 40% of our clients are single-parent households, so our housing assistance does help people with a much lower income threshold, specifically for Morro Bay. This year, we have helped four different households with rapid rehousing funds for deposit and some months of rent. The average deposit per household is currently increasing, which these funds would help us pay for those deposits to move folks in. Now, $3,500 is about the norm that we are paying for rapid rehousing funds. Landlords are kind of turning over after the long COVID moratorium and raising the prices of their deposits. So the CDVG request would specifically help our housing program leverage funds for move-in and for homeless prevention. We have also been helping folks in our county with the California COVID Rent Relief Program. In Morro Bay, there have been a total of 99 households that have applied for that program. We have helped two households specifically. We have also assisted some landlords with filling out that application to kind of help both the landlords and the tenants with the California COVID Rent Relief Program. The average assistance that is being requested for in Morro Bay is $8,300. 40% of those applications currently earn less than 30% of the annual median income in our county. 28% of those are in underrepresented populations such as the Hispanic and Latino community. I do want to, just as a last note here, I know that I'm running out of time a little bit, that rental assistance is still available through the state. If anybody would like to have any tenants, if there are any landlords available, or if people know anyone in the community who would like help applying for that program, we, we are helping people apply for that free of charge. You can go to our website at 5chc.org or call us at 805-574-1638. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I see Betty Winholz with her hand raised. Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you, Betty Winholz again. I thank you for the clarification. The oral presentation was a little clearer to me than the written one was, so thank you for that. I just have one question to follow up. The 15% lid then, in terms of what the city can give, is that 15% of the new money that's allocated this year, or is that 15% of this year's money plus the rollover? Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anthony, next public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for either a motion or further discussion. And maybe if I could, just take one moment to ask Cindy to just clarify the question that Betty had about the 50% lid. Is it just 50% of the new money, or does that include the rollover?
Certainly. So the way that the county has explained it to us is it's 15% of an annual allocation. Not to get too into the weeds, but in this situation, technically, the county is the grantee from HUD, and then they have these subrecipient agreements with the city. So they're, they need to report to HUD that, that no more than 15% annually is awarded to public services activities.
Thank you for that clarification. And if you could, Cindy, I'll apologize for this also, but Michael was asking from the Five Cities Coalition about the 10% issue. Could you explain the legality of that or what that asks?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. So I think if I understood his comments, he is suggesting that if there is a possibility to increase the funding because they, they want to get a 10% commitment. I think the second half of the staff's recommendation to authorize the city manager to make pro-rat adjustments can be done because we're still limited to 15%. So if we end up getting $2,000 more or some, you know, de minimis minor amount from HUD, then should the council approve this item tonight, that would authorize the city manager to, to direct what that funding would be. But based on the 15%, 15% of 2,000 might still be a very small difference increase.
Right. But that could be under the purview of the city manager. If there were a little flexibility or a few more dollars, then he could make that decision.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other, Councilmember Heller, please, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Cindy. Did a great job of the presentation, and the write-up was very clear, and I thought she did an excellent job presenting it, so thank you. Thank you for that. I'd like to thank Mr. Esavito for calling in and explaining to me a little bit more about what the Five Cities Coalition does, and I really appreciate the time that he took to do that. Those are my only comments. I'm prepared to make a motion when people are ready. Thank you.
You can make that motion, and if there's a second, we'll just continue discussing.
Okay. I move that we approve staff recommendations for item B1 regarding funding recommendations for the CDVG grant program.
Great.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Heller, seconded by Councilmember Addis for the staff recommendation. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you again, Cindy, for a great presentation, and I agree with you, Councilmember Heller. Good to know a little bit more about the Five Cities Coalition. Okay, that brings us to item C-1. It's our first business item of the evening. This is the housing legislative update and status review of the current city housing efforts. And I want to welcome Dave Mullenax, who's our Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of Cities. Dave is a great resource and a great advocate for us here on the central coast, and I'm very pleased to have him here to help us increase our understanding. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins to introduce him further, and we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'll make sure Mr. Mullenax is actually, oh, there he is.
He is.
I have it on screen, and I will forward his PowerPoint, PowerPoint, PowerPoint slide deck, using items there. And, and then after David presents, we'll have Scott Graham present sort of an update on the city housing stuff. So David's going to provide the state level, and then we'll get to Scott. So one moment while I share my screen here, and then we can turn it over to David.
I want to say, Dave, you're looking festive. I hope there are lots of presents underneath the tree.
Mostly for my wife.
Good. That's a good thing.
All right. Take away, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, talking about very important and a lot of times vaccine issue of housing and meeting the state housing needs here at the local level. It seems like for the last 10 years, every year, we get hundreds and hundreds of housing bills after the legislative session is over. There's a, there's usually a tour from legislators make around the state, and then there's a couple of studies, and they come to one conclusion that not enough housing is being built these days, and it's mostly local government obstructionist policies fault. And I want to talk about some of these issues that we're facing, and how we got here, what happened, and it'll only take a couple of minutes, and what we can look, what we, what we did this year, and what we can look forward to next year. Can go to the next one, yeah? Most of the housing challenge right now is, again, the governor has said we're millions of houses short of our needs statewide. And the challenge is always, how do we help meet those housing needs at the state level, helping the state level and meeting our needs locally? Because we all, you know, many cities of ours have affordable housing, low-income housing, workforce housing challenges. But also, how to save the nature and character of our local communities, maintaining as much local control as possible, and preserving the high quality of lifestyle in our communities that we enjoy. Now, here are some of the challenges over the last several decades that have led us to this, this challenging moment that we have now here in California and locally. Back in 1978, Proposition 13 reallocated how property taxes were, they diverted from what was normally state locally and diverted them to different parts of not only state programs, but education programs at county. And then in 1992, it was called the ERAF shift, which ERAF is kind of a dirty four-letter word for most local government people. And it's, stands for Education Revenue Augmentation Fund. It sounds quite innocuous, but what it did was, again, the state was having problems with their budget. For a lot of years, the state used local revenues like their ATO machine, and in 1992, they diverted yet another chunk of money, property taxes mostly, that would stay locally, meeting local challenges, creating programs for our communities, and diverted those elsewhere. So that we, that diversion of money helped meet state obligations for education. So what we have now is about, out of every property tax dollar that we've, if you're a homeowner, that you pay every year, on average, only about 15 or 16 cents of that dollar stays locally. And what that does is creates a dynamic called fiscalization of land use, where housing oftentimes doesn't pay for itself, in fact, sometimes is a net loss, and it forces local communities to search for commercial projects rather than... And it forces local communities to search for commercial projects rather than housing projects, because sales tax and hotel tax often are more, a better return than housing. Also, in 1986, the federal housing grants for affordable housing went away. They created a, was a tax law that disincentivized the building of multi-use families and apartment complexes, and it really cratered the building of those. And then in 2011, redevelopment agencies, which was the perfect private-public partnership, it allowed local governments using what was known as increment financing to help revitalize blighted areas in their towns. And Sacramento eliminated that after 50 years, a lot of success stories, quite frankly. Now, those three things that I just talked, just mentioned, we'll go into just a little deeper here in a minute. They have created, where they eliminated a lot of local tools to help generate housing, to create better communities here locally. And it creates this dynamic where Sacramento is getting more and more into the weeds and trying to be more prescriptive on local councils on trying to generate housing policies. And it's really an issue of one-size-fits-all, and a lot of carrot, I mean, not any carrot and a lot of stick approach. And it's something that we've had to be, we've really dealt with a lot more. The trend is just becoming more and more so over the last 10 years. Like I said, the Prop 13 really diverted a lot of revenue locally. And again, it really made the incentivization for local communities to search out things like car, you know, huge car lots, huge car malls, building hotels, creating commercial zones, because they're generating more money. You don't have to spend nearly as much money providing services like police and fire, that housing projects will often require local communities to do. Again, in 86, the federal tax law changed, removed the incentives for multi-unit housing, really cratered building of apartment complexes, multi-use, yeah, multifamily developments, redevelopment again. And what I wanted to also say about redevelopment was really the one economic tool that local governments had in order to create economic vitality, created jobs. And redevelopment agencies generated about $1 billion a year statewide for affordable housing. And in 2011, it was pretty much a political play out of spite, in my opinion, and they eliminated redevelopment agencies and took a very important tool away from local governance. So right now, the legislative dynamics, they continue over the years. They've removed all these tools for local governments, they've renewed resources for local governments, and they wonder why housing isn't being built. And the number of houses being built keeps declining every single year. And they keep thinking that we can just keep building, they can just keep passing these very prescriptive laws that a lot of times these legislators come from the Bay Area and LA, highly urbanized areas, and these laws don't really apply to a lot of communities around the state. You know, it's really a one-size-fits-all cookie cutter approach, as I put it on the screen, and it's really not appropriate for a lot of communities. And they keep rationing up more and more on this, again, more stick, less carrot approach to housing, and it really has had very little impact on the number of houses being built. We always have to remind them also that local governments don't build homes. Most of that is economic, economically driven, market-driven forces have a lot more to do with it than local governance. And so, again, we don't, we had a lot of the resources, a lot of the tools, limited to local governments or eliminated from local governments. And then we start having, again, these highly prescriptive laws, and we'll just go over three that really aren't going to have a lot of impact locally for most cities and aren't going to generate a lot of housing locally. A lot of times, these bills get in the headlines and get, a lot of hyperbole gets passed around locally, or not locally, but statewide. And quite frankly, most of these bills are not going to, they're not going to generate any housing or not very much housing. And the issue just keeps getting, the can keeps getting kicked down the road, and we're continue to have these challenges that we're facing. SB 8, again, they talk about transparency at the, you know, that locals need to be more transparent in their process on entitlement. Well, this process allows a, somebody wants to come into your community to do a project, you know, you, most times, local governments have impact fees, mitigation, you know, regulations. Well, once they submit it, the project can totally change, but you cannot change the scope of your mitigation fees or your regulations once it's been submitted. And they've also increased the timeframe that they're allowed to do that. So again, it's the very opposite of transparency. It makes it much harder for city staff to deal with some of these type of projects. Now, SB 9 is one that got a lot of headlines over this last year. You read in the paper, it's the end of single-family zoning in the state. What SB 9 says is you can, if you, there's subjective standards, obviously, like, you know, setbacks, and if your lot's big enough, you can actually split the lot and put two units on each lot. So there'd be four units where there was one. Now, unfortunately, a lot like this will impact communities very asymmetrically across the state, because there's a lot of, most communities don't have lots this big enough to do a lot split and to put a duplex on, you know, each parcel. Also, on the, once you split the lot and you create it, the owner of the original, of the property, they have to live there three years before they can move away and have the four units existing there. So when this bill was first proposed by the Senate, President of the Senate, you know, there were lots, there were studies saying it's going to generate hundreds of thousands of new homes. But once you really get down into the details, it'll probably generate dozens of homes around the state over the next few years. And it's really not going to have that big of an impact as far as meeting the challenges the state was hoping it would meet. And then I know SB 10 is very near and dear to Morro Bay as well. It would allow, and again, this is an opt-in bill, that the council would have to vote to opt-in. And what it would, what it would do is allow cities in these urban infill zones, would allow you to undo previously, like, citizen initiatives that would prevent growth. And if you wanted to, you could opt into this bill by a vote of the council, and you would be able to upzone up to 10 units per each parcel. But again, it's something that you, as a city, would have, you, as a council, would have to vote in to adopt. And there's just not, a lot of cities are taking up that opportunity, quite frankly. And finally, you know, so this year, we had hundreds of bills, and again, most of them had very little impact on, on actual creation of homes, building of homes. The Assembly, after the legislative session was over a few months ago, they spent several weeks going around the state doing these workshops, about a dozen Assembly members. Quite frankly, they didn't, they did not want a lot of attention to it. They created a study that, again, once again, we're going to see bills like we just talked about, SB 8, 9, and 10. We're going to probably target objective standards at the local level as well, and we can expect to see, again, hundreds and hundreds of new bills next year. And we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to lobby our legislators very, have to stay engaged, and we have to get our community engaged as well, and to make sure that, again, we can maintain as much local control as possible for our communities, for quality of lifestyle. And also, let's get, make sure we focus on getting local governments the tools and the support that we need in order to move forward with some of these type of approaches. Now, what's happened is the last several years, again, a lot of these bills have been written by legislators from the Bay Area and from LA, Los Angeles, really don't apply to a lot of cities that are outside those areas. And they are a power block up there in Sacramento, quite frankly. It can be very challenging, kind of, getting through the bubble that exists up there in Sacramento. And in the early aughts, when the state budget was in a mess and upside down almost every year, they were using local budgets like their ATM machine, and we had to run five different initiatives over the course of seven years. And we were successful in all five initiatives. And it was because we had local leaders in every part of the state, and we were able to get the word out to our constituencies, our communities, the leaders, which the council is, and we were able to win all five initiatives easily. Now, there is some initiative proposals to return some local control powers, where the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Process, would be superseded by local housing element plans. And we can, there's a circulating initiative going on right now, but what I would think is, if we cannot be successful over the next couple of years in the legislature, that maybe in 2024, that we can expect to maybe have to go back to the initiative process and directly to the people to make sure that we're doing, you know, we are addressing this housing challenge in ways that work for both the state and for local communities. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Dave, thank you so much for that high-level overview of what's going on at the state level with the new bills. And I'm going to open it up to council questions before we go to Mr. Graham and his presentation. Any questions for Dave? Seeing none. Dave, looks like you did a great job. Appreciate very much you being here tonight. We have received quite a bit of information on, obviously, all of these legislative actions and are pretty familiar with regard to what's required. But maybe I'll just ask one question, Dave. This is, this is the big one. So what does work? I mean, in essence, you know, if you think about cities, you know, it's an unfair question, I know, but what do we need to work on to improve our housing stock in a community like Morro Bay, which I know you're familiar with, that doesn't have a lot of lots that is dealing with issues of affordability, obviously? But what are your thoughts about that in general?
You know, again, I think we need to return those tools, things, approaches like the redevelopment agencies, and again, what that, those did, they allowed local governments to bond against finance financing to create infrastructure that would make it economically viable and attractive for private sector to invest in. That would create, and then you have to use some of that money that would get thrown off by the increased value of tax revenue for affordable housing. So you not only created jobs, you created infrastructure, you revitalized parts of town that might not have been doing so well, and you also created funds, real money, for affordable and low-income housing. And the fact that they eliminated that in 2011 was, I think, a horrible decision. They were, quite frankly, they were tired of us beating them at the ballot booth, and they, they kind of did it out of spite, in my opinion.
Well, thank you, Dave. I appreciate it. Any, any questions for Dave? All right, Dave. Thanks again. You're welcome to stick around. If not, we're going to go to kind of the local picture of what's happening here with our policies. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. I'll probably hop into that, kind of, you know, dovetailing into what Mr. Mullenax was talking about. Your staff report this evening does include a legislative update memo from the city attorney's office that does touch on SB 8, 9, and 10. And we also have a legislative update memo from Towns and Public Affairs that covers a lot of the other SB 8, 9, and 10, plus a lot of the other housing legislation that was passed in the last year. So certainly take a look at that for the sort of legislative update package if you want or desire more information on that. With that, I am going to share my screen. Okay, you should be able to see that. So we're going to get kind of an update on what city actions are, what the city is doing related to housing, including updates on a couple of local projects that we have toward the end of the presentation. Topics I'm going to discuss is 2021, City Council adopted housing bill, the regional housing needs allocation or RENA process, some housing opportunities and constraints that the city has, some of the housing element implementation items that we're working on, the Central Coast Regional ADU program that we're involved with. And then I'll update you on the 405 Atascadero Red Affordable Housing Project. And lastly, update you on a rezone process that we're going through for the Seashell Estates property that's located next to the Casa de Flores developments. So as the city councils are aware, you just recently went through the goal-setting process. One of those goals was related to housing. You have a housing goal statement in that document, and it says, "To educate the council on new and existing state legislation related to housing." So part of that was tonight's presentation. Identify the opportunities for additional housing options and explore partnerships to support these efforts. And then continue the community development department's efforts to expedite a development review process. And I'll touch on things that are related to all of these components in the presentation. So first item is RENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The total allocated units for the county assembly of the BISPO is 10,810 units. Morro Bay's share of that is 391 units. You can see the sort of income breakdowns for those. So for very low, 97 units, low, 60, and moderate, 70, and then above moderate, which is basically market rate, is 164. These numbers are included in your August 25, 2020 adopted housing element that was certified by the Department of Housing and Community Development in September of 2020. Here's some definition information related to those income levels. So extremely low equates to a 30% of county median income. Low income is 80% of county median income. If you're looking at, you know, what that means, area median income for St. Louis County for, say, like, a two-family dwelling unit is $78,250. A family of four in that median income category, the income would be $97,000. So you can see the percentages will be based on that. I'll also tie that back into the Atascadero Affordable Housing Project when we get to that item. Some of the housing opportunities, as the council is aware, we recently updated and adopted the city's general plan, local coastal land use plan. It includes several policies and overlays to encourage mixed-use projects in the city. So like in our commercial areas, it would be encouraging residential above and behind. Our draft zoning code update also includes some of these things. Our draft zoning code will remove the garage requirement. Concept behind that was garages get used for storage lots, and the idea is that we got rid of that, it paved the way for additional accessory dwelling units on properties. It was a goal and desire of your planning commission in reviewing, I think, our 2018 version of the draft zoning code. We are in the process from an improvement standpoint for processing of applications in the city. We're moving to the next phase in implementation of CityWorks, which is the city's project tracking asset management system. And we're working on the go-live of the city's permit submitted portal. Along with that, we're working on implementing a new online plan checking application called Digiplan. That will allow us to electronically plan check building permit applications and even planning permit applications. It will be allowed, again, for folks to submit electronically, so essentially going paperless. This is, again, to improve and shorten review times at the city. We're about three-quarters of the way through that process, sort of finalizing the last piece, which is how you do payments online, and we're working with the city's finance department on that. We've included in the draft zoning code an increase in height in the downtown, specifically Morro Bay Boulevard, and on specifically Morro Bay Boulevard, uh, and on Main Street, uh, to 37 feet would allow for three-story buildings. And again, that's to encourage, uh, you know, residential housing above commercial, um, developments. And, and sort of lastly, um, we have the housing, uh, implementation project. And there are several, uh, things included in this, and I'll go over them in more detail way, a little bit later in the presentation, but it's development of policies of residential by rights, um, in concert with development of objective design standards. Um, we'll be updating the city's density bonus, um, clauses and policies, um, bringing the ordinance into compliance with current accessory dwelling unit law and, um, updating our inclusionary housing policies. Again, I'll speak to each one of those in a little bit more detail here in a minute. Some of the constraints we face, and I think Mayor Heading referenced this a couple of minutes ago, a city is mostly built out. Um, we have very few vacant lots in town. Um, and then if you're looking at, say, the mixed use component of what we could do, because we've expanded policies in that area, um, the problem with it is most of our commercial, in most of our commercial zones, those mixed use areas contain small lots again. And so we require a developer to sort of assemble lots, um, to get economies of scale to make, you know, that sort of mixed use and development feasible. So one of the issues that we've heard from some developers, um, in, in speaking with, um, over these types of policies. Uh, we're also potentially constrained by Measure F, voter initiative, uh, that requires any annexation of property, uh, to go through a vote of Morro Bay citizens. Uh, legality of that is sort of yet to be tested, um, but that's something that the city could take on and take a look at, um, in greater depth in the future if the annexation was something that was desired in order to create space, um, for housing. So the housing, um, element implementation project, uh, that I sort of touched on briefly earlier, um, it has that residential by right component. That's, um, development of procedures to streamline housing projects, uh, for multifamily housing, um, and that would be housing that would be approved at the staff level. Like we come up with a number, say 12 residential units, and they could be approved at the staff level, they would still go through a noticing process, but they would not be going to planning commission. Um, uh, we have the accessory, uh, accessory dwelling unit, um, updates. Um, we're working with a consultant RRM design group on all of these items. Um, they're going to also develop, uh, an incentive program for ADUs. Uh, they're going to develop a handout for us that we can give to folks to kind of direct them through the ADU process. Um, excuse me, and we're also looking at, um, the possible development of tiny home and micro home policies that might relate to units that you could have on a, in conjunction with a single-family home or just developments that you could have that were made up of these types of, um, housing, um, options. Uh, we're looking at, uh, updated the city's density bonus, um, policies. Uh, the idea would be to expand and clarify requirements, um, related to the density bonus policy and create and incentivize production of deed restricted affordable housing units. Um, and we'd be looking at the percentages, like right now, we have the ability to go over 35% density bonus, but we don't have any parameters that say what you're supposed to do with that. Like what are the income levels of housing that we want related to that and those types of things? And, and so the, the update to that policy will, will flesh that portion of it out. Um, updated the inclusionary housing ordinance. Um, currently developers, uh, that would come into the city and build multifamily housing, uh, projects, uh, would be required to provide some portion of those, um, units as lower, moderate income or paid in Lufy. Um, the idea is to revise, um, those policies, um, and to expand the types of projects that would be applicable to the in Lufys, like potentially applying them to commercial type projects. Um, and then we want to also like make it a little bit more strict as it relates to the housing, um, projects that come forward, and we want to limit the number that pay in Lufys. If they can actually provide the units on site, we want them to provide those units. And so we want the policies to, uh, to be reflective of that, um, concept. Uh, want to come up with some, um, objective design and development standards. Um, these will help promote, uh, quality design in, in, uh, in relationship to new projects that came forward. Uh, they would provide guidance to applicants and projects, uh, that come forward, uh, as it relates to what the projects are supposed to look like. It would create a streamlined development process. And these things would be, and the, and the, um, objective design standards would be, those design standards that we apply to that residential by right policy. Um, there's kind of this two work in conjunction with one another to facilitate multifamily housing, whatever number of units we end up coming up with, um, to be approved at, again, the staff levels and not going to a public hearing. Um, all of this was paid for through grant funding, um, this, uh, this effort, uh, again, it's ongoing, but it was $138,000 in SB two, and then, um, regional early action planning or REAP grant program funding. We are in a collaborative process with, uh, which is, we've, uh, titled the Central Coast Regional ADU Program, uh, that involves the development of stock accessory dwelling unit plans. Um, we're partnered with the cities of Atascadero, Aurora Branda, and Grover Beach on this effort. Um, we also received refunding for this in the amount of 181,000. Uh, the project is developing the full set of stock accessory dwelling unit plans, um, that would be provided to folks that are desiring to develop accessory dwelling units free of charge. Um, there'll be pre-plan checks, so ready to go. Um, the unit sizes that we've identified, um, range from 315 square feet, uh, to 1,055 square feet, um, and includes studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. Um, they have multiple exterior and foot floor plans that are available to them. Uh, exterior facade, uh, concepts include Coastal Ranch, California Modern, Craftsman, and Beach Bungalow. Sort of the benefits of the plan, um, is to reduce building plan check and review times, to boost ADU production, and then to reduce the overall cost of ADU construction if you don't have to pay for the construction documents to build the, um, to build the unit. Um, and, uh, we're going to have an update on this, on the stock ADU plans, is going to go to the planning commission on December 21st of this month. So our next planning commission meeting, we're going to have a presentation on these, so I encourage all to attend. And we're now moving on to the update of, uh, the 405 Atascadero Affordable Housing Project. Um, project opponent is Hazle or the Housing Authority of San Luis Obispo. It is a 35-unit affordable housing project. Um, they are through building plan check with us and, um, they are, and their plans are ready, uh, to issue a building permit. Um, and it's hard to say that they will be probably pulling those in January of 2022 and would be starting construction, um, soon thereafter. Um, that project comes with an overall affordability at, that's set at 48.7% of area median income, so that's pretty low. Um, so it'll accommodate those that are the most needy of housing in our community. Sort of the last item I wanted to touch on was the rezone of the Seashell Estates, um, property. That's that area you see on the screen to the right there, outlined in red, that's adjacent to, uh, the Costa de Flores. Um, the idea would be to rezone that property, um, from suburban residential, which allows zero to four units per acre, um, to a medium density designation, which would allow seven to 15. Uh, that would result in a yield of potentially up to around 70 units, um, with density bonus included. And that would be 70 units of multifamily housing, um, most or all of which, um, could potentially be apartments, which would be fantastic for the city. Um, the status of that project is it's currently undergoing environmental review. Um, once we get the document back on that, we will route it to the state clearinghouse. Um, so we'll be looking at going to hearing in the February to March, um, timeframe of 2022. So it's an exciting, it's not the project itself, it's just the land use change, and if that was successful, then a project would likely follow be, uh, behind that process. I think that's the last slide I have for you. So I will stop sharing my screen and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Hey Scott, thank you for the comprehensive, um, review of where you are with regard to the city's processes and policies for implementation and also, um, where we are with the current projects. I'll go ahead and open it up for council questions. Um, Councilmember Heller, sir, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Scott, that was a great presentation. Thank you very much, very much to the point. And I'm very excited about all the changes you're making in your department and all the things that are going forward, uh, with the ADUs and, and other things you discussed.
I am concerned about SB nine, and I'm wondering, I know you're in the midst of, of, uh, a new zoning update, zoning code update. How does SB nine affect what you're doing now? And I want to, I want to talk specifically about the many 2, uh, 2,400 square foot lots in Morro Bay and the 5,000 square foot lots in Morro Bay. How will SB nine affect, uh, current and future owners in terms of what they will be able to do and what might be required to do under SB nine?
So, um, we are, as, as you indicated, Councilmember Heller, in the process of, um, updating the zoning code. It does include policies to implement, um, SB nine. Um, so, you know, as was indicated by Dave Mullinax, um, it does allow you to subdivide property, uh, and to create, um, two lots with up to two units on each. Um, it does have, uh, lot size limitations that you have to, I think it's like 1,450 square feet or something along those lines. So each lot, when you subdivide it, has to be at least that large. I think that's the number. I need to, I'd have to go look at it better to verify. Um, so there are some limitations to that. That is included in the city draft zoning, um, uh, policies, um, you know, as per the legislation. Um, so we have at least, our understanding, um, you know, implemented, um, the recent, um, legislation that is SB nine, um, into the document. Um, certainly, it, you know, there's a reason they call it the end of a single-family zoning because potentially if you have lots that are, you know, large enough to do that lot split with, then you could have a number of units, um, you know, on very small lots, um, within the community. So, um, that is a concern. You, you can pass, um, ordinances, you know, if there's health, life, safety concerns, if there's, you know, water concerns, if there's, um, issues related to, like you're in a high hazard severity zone related to, um, uh, yeah, related to our, our urban, uh, if you're in a high hazard space, unrelated to fire. Um, I know some of the, our neighbors to the north, uh, and east are doing that, uh, passing, um, ordinances, um, to restrict them in, in some of those areas, um, where that's a concern, uh, wouldn't really apply to us, though.
So that's the number, Heller, uh, if I could, uh, just to expand on your question. Um, so, Dave, that the city do any specific development, it, it allows, uh, the property owner to, uh, propose and move forward with, as Director Graham was saying, you know, lot splits or adding more units to a property. So, um, you know, that, that's something to understand, that it's, it's the property owner that would initiate, um, any actions under SB nine. Um, but they're allowed to do more than most cities allow them to do now. Um, and also Director Graham was referring to, um, if you are, if areas of a city are high or very high fire hazard zone, or it's a historic district, then, uh, SB nine generally doesn't apply. Um, and you, you can't, uh, subdivide the lot into, um, basically super small parcels. Um, as Director Graham was referring to, um, I believe it's, you can't go below 1,200 square feet.
Yeah, 1,200, at least, Chris.
So, um, if you have a lot that is smaller than 2,400 square feet in the first place, then SB nine wouldn't apply. Uh, but to be clear, uh, this does basically preempt local control over, um, certain aspects of, um, uh, um, you know, what can be done with single-family residential properties or, or what, at the moment, are single-family residential properties.
Okay, and so it doesn't man. I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, I'm more than happy to discuss, uh, further off. There, there is a, a rather lengthy, uh, legal, uh, memo that, uh, my office prepared, which is attached to the, um, the staff report. But, um, but please go on, have you got another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, uh, so the owner of our one lot is not mandated to split it? That they have to request it, is that correct?
It would come through an application process with the city like, uh, any other development takes place.
Okay, gotcha. Those are my questions. Thank you, Scott and Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Um, other questions for Scott? Scott, real quickly, just, um, I, I, I think, um, you indicated that, uh, I get my notes here. Um, we have an item going to the planning commission on 12/22. That would be the stock, uh, plans for ADUs, is that correct?
Uh, yes, going to the planning commission on 12/21. Um, um, and it would be the first presentation to the city of the, the stock, uh, ADU plans. Um, and, uh, again, there's, you know, like five different sizes and four different exterior treatments for them and, um, and then some foot floor plan options and those types of things. So a lot of, a lot of opportunity and a lot of flexibility built into the plans, um, so that they could be used on a wide number of lots. We really did look at also unit widths, because we have, most of the lots in the town are pretty small. And so we looked at unit widths, um, that would specifically fit in the, like 12-foot wide to 15-foot wide range that, that folks could utilize in, you know, in their backyards. And so, um, uh, it's the, uh, the two, the first two plans that they came up with are reflective of that. And then some of the ones are larger, but we probably won't get too many of those because the lots in Morro Bay are, are not very large, so.
And that has the opportunity, if I'm not, um, incorrect, to, um, dramatically lower costs, increase, um, the rapidity with which permits could be processed and could really advantage us with regard to, um, ADU production in the city. Um, how long after that do you see, um, full implementation potentially being, um, implemented?
I think we're supposed to be done, and I'd have to check, because I wasn't on the last call, um, with the group. Um, I think I'd have to, I, I, I believe we were supposed to be finished with that, uh, with, with the ADU plans, um, toward, uh, late spring next, uh, next year. Uh, because we have to, they have to finalize the plans, develop the construction documents, and then we're going to have them planned check by a third party for everybody. Um, and, uh, so there's a little bit of, there's work more to do. Right now, they're on the, the layout, the exterior materials, like what they look like, but they haven't moved on to the construction documents yet.
And the inclusionary housing ordinance, uh, when do you suspect that may be coming forward or for consideration?
Um, it'll be late spring as well. Um, we're just now starting to talk, talk with the consultant about those. Um, we, we, we started with, um, some of the housing by right stuff first and, and the, um, and the development standards are going to go along with those. Um, those were the first pieces that we picked up. Um, those are the kind of the second, uh, that's kind of the second item. That and the inclusionary housing and density bonus are kind of the second items that they're working on.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Scott? Hearing none? I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item, um, item C dash one on our agenda this evening. Public comment is now open for item C one. And Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Heading. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. This is, uh, basically a receive and file, um, unless there are any other, uh, comments from council. I'll just, uh, go ahead and thank Mr. Mullinax again for being here, uh, to present, uh, at a high level what's going on, um, at the state level. Chris, thank you for the memo. I found it, um, excellent, informative. To me, it's, it's a great document for council to be able to use as a quick reference for understanding these complex changes that are occurring. So thank you so much for that. And Mr. Graham, appreciate the work you're doing and look forward to, um, realizing, uh, some of these changes, um, to advantage our city, to be able to build smaller units that are affordable for Morro Bay. So thanks to everybody. Any other comments, folks? Okay, none. That brings us to item, excuse me, C dash two. And let me just get my notes here. This is, um, the review of the water reclamation facility quarterly update report. And I'm going to turn it over to either Mr. Qualick or Roar or both of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Greg, are you going to give me an on-ramp or would you like me just to do the, the thing that I like to do?
I'd be happy to introduce you, uh, Mayor. I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Kyle Roar, our program manager for the WORF project. Will be giving the WORF quarterly update.
Thank you, Greg, for that eloquent introduction.
Yeah, best introduction I've had all day. Um, Mayor Heading, members of City Council, happy holidays. It's very nice to see you all again. And as always, I wish I were there live and in person, but I'm sure we all do. Let me, uh, share the screen. And please let me know if you can see it.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. So today is the Morro Bay City Council's, uh, version of the water reclamation facility quarterly report. Um, it's the same report, uh, given to CFAC with one additional, uh, slide, so per the usual format, uh, that we're used to. So again, um, just providing, uh, there's no recommendation, we're just providing, uh, the report and input, and I will be answering questions at the end, just like always. So the summary, this is, uh, this has not changed since the last time we were together. Our, uh, any... Our, and again, as a reminder, this is the Q one twenty twenty-two report. So this is for the period ending September thirtieth of this year, which as I get deeper in this presentation, it will become important to think about what this timeframe is, you know. We're now almost to the end of the, of Q two. So just a reminder. We still have, as of the end of Q one twenty twenty-two, the same one hundred and forty-four point seven million versus the original baseline budget of one twenty-five point nine. This is unchanged. However, there was some reconciliation done to the project components, the program components themselves, which I'll explain, but the total amount is still what you're, what you've seen in the last presentation. In addition, we're still on schedule. TSO compliance, as a reminder, is the end of February of twenty twenty-three. Current schedule is showing substantial completion in early July of twenty twenty-two. Remember, that is, that is the facilities involved in meeting the TSO requirements of the regional board, namely the treatment plant and conveyance. So as I mentioned, we're, I'm gonna have to start changing the orientation of this slide. I think it's getting too wide. But the overall Q one FY twenty-one twenty-two budget remains the same. If you, if you have your, your sharp glasses on, you can see that the project components, the reclamation facility, which again is the treatment plant inside the fence, the conveyance, recycled water, general project, construction contingency, four of those items have shuffled a bit and have changed, and I'll explain to you the nature of those changes right now. So the water reclamation facility and the conveyance facilities, and I'll try to not get too crazy wonky on the accounting part of this thing, but after fiscal, after the last fiscal year closed, the city and Corolla worked together to take a look at the accumulation of costs among those project components of the five components, namely the four components that we've talked about and really made adjustments out of the components of the water reclamation facility and the conveyance facilities. Again, this is not only what has been spent to date, but what we project to be spent, which is currently the one forty-four point seven number. In that reconciliation, items that we felt provided benefit to the overall program belonged in the general project as opposed to being allocated to the individual project components, namely the treatment plant and conveyance. So the lion's share of the changes that you see there and the increase in our expected completion of the general project, for instance, was due to the fact that we've unallocated certain costs to date and certain costs for the future into the general, into the general project bucket because it quite frankly made more logical sense for those costs, such as staff time, legal, land acquisition, and some other professional services that lend themselves to a more broad program flavor than essentially dumping them on the water reclamation facility or the conveyance facility. In addition, we have adjusted the project reconciliation for the water reclamation and conveyance facilities to more closely match, in fact, at this point identically match the estimate at completion for both of those project components. So we can go back to this at the end. I know I probably spoke too much about this issue. It's probably pretty clear to you guys, but I just wanted to point that out. So here's our slide of what we spent to date. We're at seventy million, as you can see in the bottom table in the far right, as of the end of fiscal twenty-two Q one. The table above shows the breakdown of what was spent where. And this is all, by the way, all these tables are in the report that's part of the staff report. So this is a slide that I wanna spend a minute or two on. I, the last time I was with you, I discussed that, you know, the end of June, we were pleased that the actual monthly expenditures exceeded what we had forecasted because historically they had been trailing. And what we really are hoping is to get more alignment, if you will, of the, of the orange and the blue lines, for lack of better words. I should point out that this is a cash flow projection. We are operating on a cash basis as opposed to an accrual basis when I'm presenting these reports to you. So we see that, again, the actual expenditures over the Q one period are tracking below what was forecasted. Generally speaking, the reasons for this is reduced productivity on the conveyance facilities. Also, again, because this is a cash analysis, it's very likely that we receive an invoice from the conveyance folks, from the conveyance contractor at the very end or soon after the very end of the close of the Q one. So I would be surprised if that orange line in September isn't actually a little bit higher. But the takeaway here is we are not spending what we are forecasted to spend, and we're making steps to improve that as we move forward the project, namely by increasing the productivity of the conveyance facilities. The schedule for Q one twenty-one twenty-two is the same as it was for the prior quarter. I will say that I have a look ahead slide to Q two towards the end of this presentation that addresses costs in an effort to give you, City Council and the public, as much clarity as I can when I'm presenting to you. The schedule will change in Q two. The conveyance element is gonna be lengthened, as will the recycled water element. And during our next time together, when I'm presenting the Q two report, I will explain you the rationale of that schedule extension. But this is the schedule as of the end of Q one. So project financing update. And the last time we were together, we were talking about potentially pursuing bridge financing. The good part of the cash flow slide that I just showed you is that the cash burn is not as dramatic as we thought it would be, especially during this part of the program where we have two of the project elements really moving quickly. Fortunately, we've made progress with SRF. We were anticipating potential delays in getting reimbursed. And fortunately, we've had very good success to date in getting reimbursed timely, and we think that our pessimism would not be well founded based on what we've seen. And, you know, hats off to Sarah and her team and the people who are working with, for me, on this program that we really, and namely the design build team, to get us in a space where we're getting reimbursed on the construction loan with good speed. I just mentioned lower than average, more than estimated monthly expenditures, so we're not having a cash gap right now, but we're gonna keep an eye on it. And I know Sarah's on the phone, and if she wants to chime in or add on to this slide, I guess, you know, Sarah, you wanna chime in if you want? If not, we can do it at the end. Is there something I missed there?
Covered it. Thank you.
So I like to give you, I like to give you the slide, these slides as a look ahead mainly because, but by the time the prior quarter elapsed, it's, it's, there's been at least a month and a half or in this case, more into the program. And so I wanna give you a peek on what we're looking at in Q two, and this is also in the staff report, but it's not in the quarterly report. So new contract amendments came through. You saw them in October for Cogstone, Far Western and Anvil. Excuse me, Cogstone for the oversight, the monitoring. Far Western is your archaeological services group, and Anvil, of course, is the conveyance contractor. The background of all those are captured in the staff report that was back in October. The point that I wanna give you here is that even though those things went through in Q two, all three of those are captured and covered within the conveyance facilities contingency budget. So those items that came in front of you in August were anticipated and were captured in what we had in conveyance. There are also potential change orders that are currently under development that are not captured in the contingency looking for, and I wanted to give you a heads up on these. First of all, the Black and Beach, again, FPB, Philance Team is the contractor for the inside defense, the Wharf treatment plant itself. We're negotiating various change orders with them right now related primarily to the cost escalations of by-chain issues brought about by COVID nineteen, as well as some additional requirements that the contractor has had to meet, excuse me, for SRF loan compliance and reporting and reimbursement requests. We're looking at a range, and I apologize, it's a broad range of a quarter of a million dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars, which, as I just mentioned, is gonna require an increase in program budget. Secondly, the Anvil builders, so that your conveyance contractor and waterworks engineers who designed the conveyance are working together to address a more stringent requirement that is being imposed by the local air pollution control district, namely having to do with emissions from the emergency diesel generators. We're looking at somewhere between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars to address that change order, and that would involve designing of necessary improvements for the engines and how they're mounted, in addition to environmental pollution control systems for the, for the diesel generators themselves. So again, these two items, you know, somewhere between right now, five hundred and fifty and one point two million dollars are not in the current budget. And if these are resolved by the end of Q two, which is frankly unlikely since we only have two more weeks left in it, but it will be captured in any budget reconciliation, new budget reconciliation we do for Q two. So this presentation was provided to CFAC, and their, their input and comments had to do with these items that you're looking at right now. Discussion of the Q one forecasted cash flow versus actual, which I spent some time on with you, that's, that's the crazy curve we talked about where we're not spending what we were hoping to have spent. So we discussed that with the CFAC. We also discussed the SRF, some issues related to the SRF loan balance, namely what's remaining. Are we getting all of the loan, all of the funds due to us from the planning loan and things like reimbursement status? We also discussed the conveyance facilities control, which I alluded to in a slide earlier about mainly, you know, where is that gonna end up? And I'll tell you right now that we're still establishing what we think is a good new budget for the conveyance, I'm sorry, schedule for conveyance. And we talked about the pending change order budgeting, which I just shared with you on the last slide. So that is, that's the end of my formal presentation, and as always, I'm here for questions, and I think my deputy is still there somewhere, Paul and Nico, if there's detailed questions on the conveyance.
Great, Kyle. Thank you again for the quarterly report update. We appreciate it. And I will open it up for council member questions at this time. For any questions of Kyle? Oh, Councilmember Heller, sir, I see your hand. Thank you.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mayor. Kyle, thank you for your presentation. I see you got your holiday haircut, and you're all ready to, you're ready to go visit the relatives? Or they're gonna come see you? My first question has to do with traffic impacts. I think we're all kind of stunned by the South Bay Boulevard, Highway one, full closure that's going to last for two months. Do you see this as the major traffic impact for the balance of the project? Or we can have some other closure perhaps in the future at Highway forty-one and Highway one, or some other location that'll impact traffic to the extent that the South Bay Boulevard closure is likely to do?
Councilmember Heller, I can tee this off and hand it to my partner in crime, Mr. Miko. Maybe I won't even tee it off because Paul's sitting there looking really nervous that I'm gonna answer this question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Kyle. Councilmember Heller, thanks you for the question. That's actually a good question so that we can take a look, look out ahead of where we think, where else we think we're going. Atascadero Road is gonna be a big impact for us when we turn the corner after we get north of Lila Kaiser and head over to Pump Station A. So Atascadero Road extends the asphalt pipe all the way to the, what we call the air relief structure at the existing roof, and the two forest mains go into Pump Station A. So Atascadero Road probably gonna be another two to three month project there as well. And then we're currently evaluating an additional project, one water project to replace a sewer in Atascadero Road, so that'll be an additional three months. So Atascadero Road could be in for, between Highway one and the beach could be a pretty lengthy impact later, or mid twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so do you expect that to be a full closure or just a major impact, obviously, on the west side of Highway one?
That's, that's actually a good question as well. I, we, we cannot close that road. That is gonna be an area that we have to, we really do have to keep that open. The high schools over there, obviously, access to the beach, very, very important for us. And so, you know, we will do our best. The ground, the ground over there is very sandy, high groundwater, and we, we, as you know, I think in some of our discussions in the past, we fought some groundwater issues at Pump Station A, and we anticipate that those would, we would be fighting those all the way along Atascadero Road. So as long as we can do the work safely and we can keep the road open and there's no concern that the road might cave, we definitely need to keep that open.
Okay. My next question, if I can get into the weeds here a little bit regarding the recycled water project, has work started on the construction of the monitoring well as yet?
Mind me take that, Paul, and you can clean up the mess? Sure. We unfortunately, we had the test injection well work out for bid and the period closed, I wanna say nine days ago. I might be making that up, but it recently closed. We did not receive any bids for a pilot injection well, and a pilot injection well is the key, is really the critical item to get going. And just for your, Councilmember Heller, you, I'm sure you understand this, but for the benefit of the rest of the council and the public, that is really gonna trigger a whole bunch of effort from the technical team in terms of what the aquifer can handle, how's it gonna get in, how are we gonna take it out? It's really the tip of the spear, the whole recycled element. We are, actually, within the last few hours, are thinking of creative ways to get a contractor on board to do that work. So that is, that is the latest status. Until we, until we can get that all going, we are, we're a little bit of a standstill to be completely frank.
The monitoring well is the, one of the monitoring wells has been installed, by the way.
The monitor, right, the monitoring well.
Has been installed.
The testing, the test well that stopped the bid, unfortunately, we didn't get any.
Okay. The last thing, well, not the last thing, but on the, on the piping project, under project accomplishments, it states that a tree replacement, city is considering a tree replacement project. I'm assuming that's along the bike path there. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes. So we have, with the closing of the Vista easements and the acquisition and actually getting the land from widening the easement along the bike path, we're able to now more efficiently build the pipelines and achieve DDW separation between the pipelines by spreading those out across the bike path and not just putting ourselves in a twenty-foot strip. And so with that, we are looking at and working with Coastal Commission about removing some additional trees in order to spread those pipelines out, get the required DDW separation, eliminate waterline relocation, that's a pretty expensive bid item, and eliminate waterline relocation, that's a pretty expensive bid item, and, and put those pipes in that way. That also provides us an opportunity to replace those trees and be very thoughtful about the restoration plan along the bike path, and replace the trees that have been removed or will be removed by the project with a species, species that are appropriate for the space, the spacing, the location of those trees, so they're not under power lines, and so on, but that work is just, that's ongoing, we're working closely with Anvil on the benefit we'd receive from spreading those pipes out, and then also the restoration of that area. One of the things that we have done is retain the services of a landscape architect who's preparing some conceptual renderings that we'll be bringing back as we flesh out the details for this.
Okay. And then my last question is kind of a general one, you know, when I look through your quarterly report, it talks a lot about estimates of completion and so forth, and yet, you know, when you look close at it, closely at it, it's really the estimate to complete the quarter. So I'm wondering, you've been on the project for a couple of years now, at what point in time do you expect that you'll be able to project the estimate at completion for the entire program?
You know, Councilmember Heller, that is a terrific question, and it's also a really difficult question, and I'm glad you asked it. Right now, there are a couple of items that have not been resolved that are really, in terms of the overall program, the program in its entirety, maybe I should break this down into components. The estimate of completion for the wastewater treatment plant itself, the work itself, that number is pretty darn good. The conveyance estimate at completion, because of the slow 16 and the ship, the shipo issues and with slow 16 for one, and for some other productivity challenges with the conveyance, some of which are risks owned by the city, some of them are risks owned by the contractor, and some of the unknown having to do with recycled water facilities, namely, you know, how many wells, where can they go, what's the productivity going to be, it's because of those two items with the conveyance and the recycled water facilities that makes it very difficult to give you an EAC. I can tell you this, that when we reach a milestone for the conveyance, for instance, once we get to the point where the heavy unknowns regarding shipo are done, any delay, any delay, and Paul, please chime in when I'm done, any delays that we are waiting for the other, you know, shoe to drop or handful, once we get over that hurdle, I would be much more confident when I tell you that this is, this is an EAC, this is an EAC that we can really stand by. And unfortunately, we just don't have that certainty on the conveyance side right now. The recycled wells piece, we have a little bit better feel, at least from a cost perspective, I think. What we don't have a good feel for is how the sequence of events are going to play out in terms of maybe needing to put the wells in a different place on the site, or the kind of analysis that might stretch the recycled water element project out a bit. And as you all know, with your experience, schedule is money. So again, I'm sorry, I'm a little unwitted, but there are a couple of items in conveyance and recycled that once we get on the other side of that, what's going to happen, I will have much better EAC number. I hope that, I hope that's sometime in the next two quarters, that's the, I mean, that's the best I can do on that question.
It's okay, Kyle, I appreciate your frank response to that, and obviously, it's something we're all looking for, but I understand exactly what you're talking about, and I look forward to getting to that point, as you do as well, I'm sure. One, one, one last question, then I'll let some of the other council members ask theirs. I don't know that I'll ever fully understand the soil slip issue at the WRF plant site, but if I understand it correctly, when all is said and done, and the contractors have left, and the plant is operating, that site, including the landslide potential, will remain for perpetuity, and it will remain the liability of the city. Do you think that's a fair statement, or am I misinterpreting what's going on?
I, I'm going to stay in my lane, I think from a technical, I can answer from a technical perspective, you're always going to have a potential soil slip issue, where there's been one before, and frankly, where there hasn't been one. In terms of the city's liability and responsibility of taking care of it in the future, I'm going to defer to Mr. Newmeyer to talk about the legal aspects of it.
Fair enough.
If that's okay.
Sure. Chris, are you there?
Yeah, I, I think that it would be better to talk about more of the legal aspects of what's under discussion, perhaps either confidentially or closed session.
Okay, well, let's do that soon if we can. Those are my questions, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Other questions looking for? Okay, seeing no further questions, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-2, any members of the public pushing to speak, now would be the time. And Anthony, do we have public comment, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Heding, currently, I see Betty Windholt with her hand raised. Okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you, this is Betty, again, some of my questions have been answered, two or three that remain are that a line item called General Project, it seems to me that the other three components of this program, the WRF, the conveyance, and the wells, are all taking reduced amounts and putting the money towards this General Project category, like, it's being increased by like $10 million, and it, my interpretation, and this is where I need some clarification, you can straighten me out, that it seems that this is like overhead, that this is administration, that this is consultant stuff, that's not on-the-ground stuff, that it's more in, you know, meetings and consultation and stuff like that. So if, if, if I'm misunderstanding that, but that's what it appears as I read the charts, I'm wondering, what effect the rain of the last couple of days with three or more inches has had on the landslide, and certainly, there was a tremendous amount of mud and gravel that was coming out the gate yesterday and today, and if that's part of the landslide, or is that just mud from somewhere else? I'm, I, I'm a little bit shocked to hear that the width of the bike area has gone to 100 feet, and that you need to use all of that, is, is part of that for wells, or is that all just spreading out of the pipes? And then my last question has to do with the resolution with PG&E and Southern California Gas that you alluded to in the report, and what issues still remain there, thank you.
Thank you, Betty, Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Heding, currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you, I'll close public comment, bring it back. First question for Kyle, quickly, the General Project line item, does the overhead, is that overheaded administrative costs, can you clarify the WRF, the conveyance, and the wells component?
Yeah, Ms. Windholt's is accurate, so the General Project category, I mentioned that we did a reconciliation, again, taking what has been spent to date, and what we think we're going to spend, and looked at the buckets, and to be really direct, if you look at the water reclamation facility, the conveyance facility, and the recycled water facilities, so the hard infrastructure, we're trying to keep those buckets, design and construction for the water reclamation facility, because it's design-built, and then hard design for the conveyance, so we're trying to keep the actual infrastructure costs, the hard infrastructure costs in those buckets. I don't want to say overhead, because overhead, overhead's kind of a, has a different definition, but the soft costs, if you will, and the consultant costs, and the ongoing program management and construction management costs, yes, she's absolutely correct, those are being captured, frankly, more accurately in the General Project budget, which is more of a standard way to track multi-component programs, so that's, she's, she's right on there. I wouldn't use the word overhead, but soft costs and consultant costs, and again, this is also includes consultants working directly for the city, as well as city staff time.
Right. And comment, Paul, on the rain, impact on the landslide, any issues, sir?
On the mud? Yeah. I was saying, I can take that, Kyle, because I'd actually been on site and saw the, saw the rain.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, so the, so most of the runoff that was, you know, that I personally observed out at the site, you know, the site has a storm drainage system that's largely in place now, with ponds and storm drains that collect the runoff locally from the site, so what, what the runoff heading toward the gate was, and what FBB was trying to control with the unprecedented rainfall that we had over the last couple of days, unprecedented compared to the last year we've had, then from the site, the portion of the site that's unpaved or unimproved down toward the gate, so it's the crushed rock that's in the driveway, the exposed, you know, the earth that's exposed because we're building walls and different structures, the BMPs that are put in place, or those stormwater control measures that are put in place that are at the bottom of the site, got overwhelmed with a lot of rain, so FBB spent a lot of time today getting those things repaired, getting a lot of that, the impact from the rainfall repaired and patched up so that it controls the sediment, and then they'll be cleaning the street at the bottom, so.
I can, let me add one, thanks very much for that, Paul, add one thing to that, is that the cruel construction management team and the Philance Black and Beach design-build team that's building the plant is in regular communication with the regional board about compliance with their own SWIPs, which is the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. In fact, as recently as yesterday, they were making sure that everything is cool on the permit in terms of what's coming off of that plant, and I will be letting the WRF Subcommittee know if we get to the point where there's a violation or any penalty, I will get, I'll get the WRF Subcommittee way in front of that, should that happen, but that hasn't happened yet.
Paul, could you speak to the width of the bike path?
Yes.
Excuse me, yeah, increasing.
So, sorry about that, Mayor, so, yeah, originally, as we, as we had said, as I alluded to before, I stated before, that we never counted, there was a 20-foot existing easement that we were putting the pipes in, and the pipes were designed to fit within that 20-foot easement. I would never, you know, nobody lives in an ideal world, and certainly, we don't, but it is, it was a far from ideal situation where we had to actually stack pipes, certain pipes being under those pipes, and because we're making purified drinking water, Division of Drinking Water requires a separation between the dirty pipes, if you will, and the clean water. It's an interesting definition, I always find to be pretty fascinating, which is when you make purified water, and if it's near a sewer line, you treat it like a water line, if it's near a water line, you treat it like a sewer line. So what we were able to do by getting the 70-foot easement is now to spread those pipes out, get that required DDW separation, because Division of Drinking Water, or DDW as I've been calling them, you know, they'll give you waivers for those separation requirements and require you to put that pipe inside of another pipe, or a casing pipe, but they don't like doing it, and you have, in each place where you have to do that, you have to go and ask Division of Drinking Water if you have permission to do it. One of our redesigns came back, because Division of Drinking Water, as they looked at it, and this is in a different location, didn't like the way it was designed, and said, well, if you can put it over here, do that, and get the separation. So in the case of the bike path, spreading the pipes and getting the 70 feet allows us to spread the pipes out, it actually eliminates the relocation of an existing water main, we can eliminate casing pipe from the purified water line, and then in the future, the city will have the ability to get in and maintain those pipes as needed, if anything were to happen to those, cut them out, repair them, do whatever they want, without having you dig past one pipe and get to pipes underneath. So getting that 70 feet, just in summary, allowed us to achieve Division of Drinking Water separation, eliminate waterline relocation, which is a credit back to the city on the project, and then achieve long-term maintenance of that, of those pipelines. Just in closing, I'll say, and it also gives the city an opportunity to take what was, in some cases, an unsafe bike path because of confined vegetation around it, flooding, mud that would collect on the bike path during wet weather events, allows us to improve drainage, improve lines of sight through there, improve coastal access, because it's now more an inviting bike path, and then achieve what the city's goals might be in the future for tree, tree replacement as a result of this project. So that's what benefits for the project to do that.
Thanks, Paul, and maybe Greg, just a very quick update on the PG&E slash SoCal Gas easement?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, as you know, we did receive, or PG&E did receive what they needed to begin work on the easement area. I did have a conversation with one of the property owners to look at some, look at doing something more permanent. PG&E and SoCal Gas both want their standard easement language for, for that area, so that they can perform their work in the long term, and preliminarily, at least, the property owner has agreed to do that, so we're currently in review on that easement language with our attorney team.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that very much. Okay, this is a received and filed, thanks, Kyle, thank you, Paul, very much, and Greg, thank you, appreciate the update on the WRF project. Yes, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, talk to you soon, as always. All right, that brings us to item C-3, this is the Utility Discount Program and Exploration of the State Executive Order Regarding Water Service Termination, and Mr. Qualick and Mr. Johnson Reels, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as you said, tonight, I'll be presenting on the Utility Discount Program and Exploration of State Executive Order Regarding Water Service Termination. This item was put together by both the Finance Department and Public Works Utilities Division. Let me share my screen. I'll give an overview of the Utility Discount Program. Pre-pandemic, our Utility Discount Program offered ratepayers a 10% reduction of their utility bill if they met our eligibility requirement. That eligibility requirement was that they needed to be income qualified through the PG&E Care Program, and as long as they demonstrated they were a participant in that program, then they could receive our 10% reduction. The whole program was funded through utility bill late payments, and it was fully funded by those late payments, so, or I'm sorry, those late penalties, and it cost approximately $39,000 a year to run. The pandemic changed all that, of course, as you saw a lot of people out of work, and businesses going out of business, and so the City Council very generously increased the utility discount to 25% off the bills. The eligibility requirements were the same, the ratepayers needed to be income qualified through the PG&E Care Program, and also, late penalties were suspended during this time, and that's important, because that means that there was no new revenue coming in to fund the program, and so the program was being funded through the remaining fund balance. Currently, that is at $250,000. The program got a lot more expensive during the pandemic, so in fiscal year 2021, it cost approximately $2,004, which is a huge increase, and if, if we were to continue with the current program, we would expect that the funds would be depleted in 12 to 18 months. So the Council Resolution that extended the increased discount program, that pandemic era program, does expire at the end of this month on December 31st, so our staff recommendation tonight is to let that resolution lapse and go back to the 10% reduction of the utility bill for the program, as well as reinstating the late penalties that fund the program. So there are many accounts currently in arrears as a result of the pandemic. In a typical year, we would see approximately 30 accounts cumulatively at around $10,000 in arrears. Currently, we have 248 residential and 16 commercial accounts in arrears of over 300 $331,000. Interestingly, of the 248 residential accounts in arrears, only 34 of them participate in the utility discount program. Again, that $331,000 that is currently owed to the city, uh, by some of, uh, the city's water customers, represents a significant threat to funding our utility capital improvements, uh, including all the projects in the one water plan, um, as well as the day-to-day operations and maintenance of the utilities division. For example, when utility workers go out to address customer service issues or fix a water main break, uh, and also billing staff that process payments. So there is some good news. Um, California, um, has a water and wastewater arrears payment program. The city applied for approximately $223,000 to receive eligible portion of water arrears plus a 3% administrative cost. We are waiting to hear back from the state on that. Eligible accounts are residential and customer, I'm sorry, residential and commercial accounts, uh, over 60 days past due between March 4th, 2020 and June 15th, 2021. So it doesn't cover all arrears, uh, but it does cover those in that timeframe. And assuming we get the full $223,000 from the state, uh, we will, we are planning on applying, uh, those funds to the accounts in arrears so we can credit them, um, and those account holders would, would owe less. Uh, there's also going to be a possible opportunity to apply for sewer arrears as well. That's something that staff is currently tracking. An overview of water shut offs. So SB 998, uh, was passed in, uh, September 2018, uh, and it was made effective February 2020. As a result, city council adopted the discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment policy in January 2020. Um, and as, as you know, that's just a couple of months before the pandemic, so we didn't really, um, have too much experience with that policy. But that policy, uh, prohibited shut offs for residential customers that were delinquent less than 60 days. It also required the city to provide notice of shut off at least seven days in advance and it included an offer for the city to discuss, uh, with customer, I'm sorry, for the city to discuss with customers alternative payment methods or deferred payment and information about available appeals and extensions. Now, fast forward to the pandemic, um, the state put out a moratorium on water, on water shut offs in March 2020. Uh, SB, um, 155 in September of this year extended the shut off moratorium to the end of this month, December 31st. And we don't expect any further shut off moratoriums from the states. And so city has prepared, uh, an extended notification plan to transition back to water shut offs. So before I jump into that, uh, I just, I, I feel the need to say that this is not something, you know, anyone is excited about. Um, the city views shut offs as a, as a last resort alternative. Um, we, we really want to, uh, notify ratepayers and customers, uh, during this transition period of what, uh, alternative options, uh, are available to them. Uh, we also, uh, plan to work with customers that are attempting to make payments, um, so that, you know, we don't shut off their water if, if they're showing, uh, effort in that regard. But I'll, I'll move on to just to overview, again, the general timeline of, um, why we're going back to water shut offs. So again, in September of 2018, the state, uh, passed SB 998. Uh, that changed how, um, water purveyors can shut off water. It was adopted by January, by city council in January in 2020. Uh, but then, just a couple of months later, um, the state put a moratorium on water shut off and then that was extended, uh, in September 2021. At the end of this month, that moratorium is expiring and we are not expecting that, uh, to be extended again. And, uh, water purveyors may resume shut offs for non-payment if customers are 60 days past due. So we are planning to, um, as of January 22, 2022, to, uh, begin implementing, uh, the previous policy, the discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment policy that was approved by council, um, almost two years ago now. Uh, I'd like to also give you some, uh, research that was conducted by our acting utilities division manager, Damaris Hanson. Um, this one was provided in the staff report as well, but here we've grouped them together, uh, by how they're handling, by, by how these, uh, regional water purveyors are handling, uh, shut offs. So, uh, we have five cities and communities at the top that are waiting to see if the moratorium is extended. Uh, and if, if there is no extension, then they all plan to reinstate SB 998, uh, shut off policy and, and begin shut offs. These are communities and, and cities that our staff has, has reached out to and, uh, that they have told us this. The next group there, uh, they are already sending out notifications, uh, to, to delinquent accounts and they are planning, uh, shut offs as soon as possible for accounts, uh, 60 days past due. And then St. Louis Abyspo is planning on starting notifications, uh, on the January bill. On February 1st, they plan to begin shut offs again on accounts past due over 60 days. Uh, Santa Maria has a bit more of a relaxed approach. They want to resume shut offs on all accounts, you know, if 60 days past due, but starting in, on March 1st. Um, and I'll, I'll gloss over the discount program there. Uh, many, many cities and communities don't have a discount program. Uh, a couple of them, including Grover Beach and Pismo Beach, have a discount program that's funded by the general fund. Um, and then St. Louis Abyspo has a discount program that's funded by late penalties as, as do we. So this is the shut off notification timeline that, that staff is planning, um, unless council directs otherwise tonight. January or February, we aren't sending out any formal shut off notices or anything like that. Those two months, uh, staff plans to, um, let our ratepayers know, let our customers know what the, what the change is and that we are going back to the old policy from 2020 on the discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment. Uh, we'll follow up in February, uh, to give additional notification. And then in March is when we'll start sending out, uh, notices to, um, ratepayers who have delinquent accounts to let them know, uh, that their account is past due. This, we believe, is, is a good idea because by March, we should know how much money we're going to get from that state program. Uh, and we should then know, um, how much each ratepayer will be credited and therefore will, will owe. And we believe that as soon as we get the funding from the state, um, most of the accounts won't be, um, too heavily in, in arrears and will be able to pay off their bills or at least start paying on their bills. Um, but anyway, in March is when we would start sending out the notices. Um, mid-March, at least 15 days prior to any water shut off, we'd give, uh, past due customers a second notice of delinquency and impending discontinuation of service. Uh, and at the same time, we would be offering some options for payment to these customers. And then finally, in early April, uh, and of course, after a 48-hour notice of termination, um, that's really when we'd be beginning these shut offs. Uh, and again, this would be a very, very much a, a last resort. So, uh, we would be making reasonable attempts to contact adults residing, residing in the residents if we haven't heard from them. Um, and again, our focus would be on communication, um, and talking with, uh, these residents and, and these customers to help them understand what the new rules are. And by new, I mean the, the rules previous to the pandemic that are being reinstated, um, and what other options they have and, and, and what we're really looking for from them and what their needs are. Um, anything we can do to avoid the shut offs would be preferable. So that is the timeline. Uh, I will not, I will save you all one minute by not reading these recommendations. They are identical to what is in the staff report, but I'd love to stick around if you all have any questions. Thank you.
Hey, Greg, thanks. Um, a very comprehensive and excellent staff report. Thank you for that. And especially appreciated the benchmarking that you did with other communities and the timeline for shut off, which is of, um, major import to me with regard to concerns, um, for people not having, excuse me, water. Uh, a couple of questions. Uh, I'll start off maybe with, um, the existing and the prior program were completely funded by penalties. So is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The utility discount program was funded by late penalties.
And, and in the absence of, of, um, having penalty dollars available, um, you would have to move to using general funds out of general fund, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So we would, uh, essentially pay down the fund balance that's currently there and, and once, and, and again, this is assuming that we, we would continue with the discount policy that we have right now. Uh, we would, um, use the fund balance until, um, it's completely depleted and then we'd have to look for, uh, some other funding sources such as a general fund.
Okay. And, um, page 338 of the staff report blew me away. It's the slide that you had that, um, gave a comparison of other cities and what they did or did not do. Am I reading it correctly and assuming that, um, for the cities that you have outlined there, that the process after state shut off moratorium is lifted, um, um, is predicated on the fact that for many of them, that SB 998, um, uh, is or isn't reinstated? And my question is, do we have an idea of the potential for that being reinstated?
Yes, my understanding is by default, um, all of these, um, water purveyors will return back to, uh, the rules under SB 998. Um, that, that, that is what, what the research, uh, showed us, um, that was done. We have not heard of, of any plans to create some new sort of program, uh, by the water purveyors. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question or...
Well, I think I asked it backwards. But I, what I meant was the moratorium. If the, if the, what's the, what's the likelihood that the moratorium might be extended, I guess is the question?
City staff here believes that it is unlikely, um, as evidenced by the fact that the state, uh, created a program to, um, help offset the arrears. And, um, it would seem logical to, to create that sort of program when the moratorium ends. It, it wouldn't make too much sense for the state to, um, create this, this payment program for water purveyors and then also continue the moratorium where arrears would continue to grow. That being said, I mean, it's, it's unpredictable. It's totally possible that the state could extend a moratorium, but it's very unlikely in our opinion.
Okay, very unlikely. Chris, did you want to chime in?
Um, you know, last week, two weeks ago, um, I don't think anyone really thought the moratorium would be extended. Uh, the governor did it once. Uh, the original moratorium was supposed to end on October 1st and then it was extended to January 1st. Uh, I was just actually reviewing that today, given the recent COVID news and the new statewide mask mandate that's now going back into effect. So it's anyone's guess. I mean, we frankly have two weeks until, uh, the moratorium, uh, expires. I guess, you know, the upcoming winter weeks will, will, uh, will, will tell. I mean, it's, uh, uh, you know, it's, there's, there's been no talk of it being extended and I agree with Director Qualick that, uh, you know, there, there's no indication that it will, except for the headlines the last few days. And, you know, the whole point of these moratoriums being put into effect in the first place. But, but I think it would be prudent for the city to assume that it won't be extended and tell it is, if it would be.
Well, the reason I ask the question is by default in your, um, staff recommendation, number two, you don't make reference to, um, any, um, action by us as a city council or recommendation if it is extended. And is that, I assume that's by design. I mean, if it were extended, would this be, um, your, your recommendation still?
Well, if, if the moratorium is extended, then we wouldn't be able to reinstate the policies under SB 998. So we would follow the state's order on that.
It'd be automatic?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That helps. And, um, am I reading it correctly? Again, page 338, 338, which blew me away, that the discount program offered and funding source by all of these cities, except for two, um, or maybe three, I should say, that there was no discount program offered during the pandemic?
That is true according to our research, yes.
And, and prior? Wow.
Yes.
Okay, that's amazing. Um, and your shut off notification timeline that you, uh, I think you had on the slides as well. Um, if I'm reading it correctly, that gives, um, individuals several months really of notification and opportunity to come into compliance before actual, actual shut off occurs.
It does. And, um, in addition to that, mayor, it, it also gives the city the opportunity to, um, understand how much funding we'd be receiving from that state program to offset and then credit, um, the accounts that are in arrears so that we can provide our customers with accurate information about, uh, what they owe. Finally, I might also add that, um, staff resources are, are very strained right now and particularly in, um, the utility billing unit. And so this extended timeline, uh, would also, uh, ease, ease the pressure on staff, um, to process, uh, all, all of these, uh, accounts that are currently in arrears.
Thank you. So all the questions I had, council member Ford, I see your hand, please.
Thank you, mayor. Um, actually, you asked quite a few of the questions I had. So the remaining question that I do have here is, um, for Mr. Qualick, um, if you could, you know, maybe expand a little bit on the outreach that you're talking about, um, to the individuals who have not responded to, um, you know, the notices received that are in danger of being shut off, what that outreach looks like? If you could just give me more information about that.
Sure. Uh, so from what, from how I understand the question is, uh, how would we handle, um, notifying account holders if they are just not responding? And so the formal answer, the official answer is that we would post a notice on their door. But we, we live in a pretty, and, and work in a pretty close-knit community. Actually, our, our customer service staff, uh, in the water division, uh, knows a lot of the customers. And so we have those kinds of relationships that, that we may be knocking on doors and, and really trying to go above and beyond and check in to see if we could locate, uh, the account holder or any adult, um, that, that lives in, on the property that holds the account. So, uh, you know, it's, we, we are not planning on some sort of bureaucratic, you know, stamps and, uh, they didn't respond. I mean, we, we really want to go above and beyond, uh, in this notification process so that we don't leave anyone behind.
Have, have, has the city considered, you know, utilizing, let's say, our Eback, um, our Serra Bay Alliance for Care, um, you know, group for those services, um, you know, understanding the time constraints, you know, on city staff and whatnot? Is there consideration for using those types of programs, um, to help with this outreach? Because, I mean, you know, just a door hanger, I don't know that that's really explaining to people, um, that might have an issue with understanding, um, the wording in these types of notices, um, and really truly understanding the opportunities to participate in California programs for helping reduce those, you know, overdue fees and whatnot. So, yeah, has that...
Scott, I'm not sure if you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I, I, just in case, Greg, you know, I'm familiar with Eback, um, Mr. Bay Action Committee that works on, uh, low-income and homeless issues in Los Osos and Morro Bay, great group of volunteers that do a lot of great work for, for our community to help run the Monday Night Dinner with, in partnership with, uh, Alliance Club, Morro Bay. Certainly, we could look at utilizing them for some of the tougher cases and by tougher, I don't mean the people, but just sort of the circumstances and, uh, connectivity and, we do have in-house, uh, folks who can address language barriers, but, you know, we would certainly be open to that idea. I honestly don't want to create added bureaucracy and, you know, um, you know, to the extent we can handle it in-house, we'd like that opportunity to do so. And we don't have a lot of water shut offs in our past history because we're able to work with individuals. And with the, the state law that passed just prior to COVID-19, um, requires all those extra touches beyond just, um, you know, uh, door hangers and mailers, uh, probably phone calls as well so that we actually get in touch. And then we have methodologies for creating, uh, repayment plans that don't require them coming to a zero balance immediately, that there's a way to, to work with them because shut offs are very time-intensive for the utility staff as well as finance staff in the front office to, to carry out. So we'd love to avoid them at all, almost at all costs, you know? So it's certainly something we would consider.
Okay, that's great. Um, yeah, because I, I, you know, I appreciate the breakdown... Yeah, because I, you know, I appreciate the breakdown of that timeline for the notification process because originally I was, you know, thinking that it was a much faster process. And prior to this meeting, you know, I inquired, you know, more information about the ability to work with our city on payment programs and, you know, that sort of thing for those who are affected. And it seems as though everything that's been said tonight is more comforting in knowing that this process won't be rushed and that we're willing to work with residents of Morro Bay to do our best to, you know, not shut their water off. Because, you know, I've said, you know, to our city manager, you know, water is life. And to shut a household, especially those with elderly, you know, possibly residing or young children who have no choice in the matter, those are the things that keep me up at night. So, you know, so I just want to, you know, I just want to say thank you for, you know, expanding on all of that and our city's willingness to work with those individuals and take those extra steps to make sure that this doesn't happen, or at least try to prevent it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Are there other questions for staff or Greg?
I have one, Mayor.
Oh, sure, yes. Councilmember Addis, please.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I don't have a big appetite for noticing people right after the holidays that their water is going to be shut off. I want to appreciate the questions that have already been shared. And I'll just be clear that I don't support using the general fund to replenish the discount program. So that's not where I'm going with this. But I do wonder two things. One is, what would be the harm in pushing the notices to February rather than January? That would be my first question.
So before I answer the direct question and what the harm would be, in our outline, we are not proposing or planning on sending out delinquency notices in January and February. In January or February, we would be using that time to send out information about the transition back to the shut off policy. And we do that very deliberately for many of the reasons that were discussed earlier. And so we wouldn't be sending out those formal delinquency notices until March. You know, the question is, as I take it, could we push that out even further? Potentially, my concern would be that for account holders who are not paying, not because there is some financial issue, but because they are playing a wait-and-see approach, you know, their accounts are going to go higher and higher into arrears. It may be more difficult to collect on those accounts. It may be more difficult at that point for some of the account holders to actually pay the bill. And so we thought that March as a starting point would be a good happy medium. It's far more relaxed than any of the other cities that we've talked to or any of the CSDs that we talked to. But again, we are fortunate in that we are not running out of money, as some of, for example, the smaller CSDs are. If they don't start reinstating the shut offs, they will not have money to operate their utility program. So we are fortunate in that that is not a concern, an immediate concern of ours. So we can't wait until March to start sending those out.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. And then is there leeway between 25% discount, 10% discount? Could we land somewhere in between? And I ask this because if I read the staff report correctly, which I may not have, it looked like the difference was about $20 a month. And so I was looking at what can $20 a month buy for people? And if you have a young child, it can actually buy quite a bit. So I was wondering, you know, where could we land anywhere in between?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. If Sarah's available, I'd love to kick that to her because she's really looked at detail, looked in detail at some of these numbers. So Sarah?
Sure, thank you. And Councilmember Addis, that would be up to council. Based on the data over the past three years, the discount program, when it was at 10% pre-COVID, also had fewer enrollees. So I think what we saw during COVID was not only the increase 25%, but also a higher utilization of the program. So those two factors combined very significantly increased the annual cost of the program to the city. It's somewhat hard to predict, honestly, how many of our residents will continue to income qualify, and that is a process that they have to go through annually to recertify for the program. So, you know, it's going to depend on customer behavior, both in terms of the number of households that are eligible and apply for the discount program, and also on the number of customers who pay late and who we assess late payment penalties on. So I don't know for certain that our pre-COVID numbers are a great barometer for post-COVID. And so we would probably just have to wait and see and closely monitor that fund balance. It is challenging, as the mayor pointed out, a number of cities don't offer discount programs because there are so many constraints on what you can use to fund them. So we have been successful previously in having sufficient rate penalty payments to fund the program. And beyond that, you know, we would be having to return to council for an alternative funding source.
I just wonder, and it sounds like we can't answer this tonight, but what I wonder is, if we're going to stop the moratorium, we're going to start at some point here collecting late fees, if we're going to replenish those funds, and if we would want to take a look at where we put that discount program rather than just putting it at 10% this evening? If there's a way to come back and check, check in on that without dipping into the general fund? Or if it goes back to 10%, if there's a way to bring it back to look at, can we increase it again at all? And one of the, I would say, you know, council did quite a bit of, had quite a bit of emphasis on outreach. We also expanded the timeframe of the program to, you know, the sign-up timeframe and tried to get the information out to more and more people. And then COVID also hit. So I think we have a dual, double layer, triple layer of things that happened to increase need for the program. I'm assuming some of that will level off and then combined with the late fees. So that would be my other question, is how can we kind of reconsider this in the future?
Right, well, I think, and I'll invite the city attorney if he has any legal opinion on this, but I think that would be up to council's purview. So the way that the recommendation and the resolution is structured tonight is basically that your prior resolution would lapse, the 25% program would lapse, and it would revert by default back to the 10% program. So that is how your June action was structured. But that's something that council could change and could certainly direct us to come back and provide you with updated information over time.
So Mayor, maybe I should bring this back to future agenda?
No, actually, I think it will be best, I think I've captured your notion and your comments, and I, we're not in discussion, we're in questions because I want to hear public comment. But I think I have an idea to craft what would be a motion that will capture your intent, if that's okay.
That sounds good. Let's try that first.
Okay, all righty. Other questions from council? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-3 on our agenda. Public comment for this item is now open. And Anthony, I ask you if we have any public comment, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Hennig. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
All right. I will close public comment then and bring this back to council for discussion and recommendation. Thanks, both Councilmember Ford and Addis for weighing in on this issue, an important one, a very, very thoughtful process, I think, on the part of staff to, in my mind, do no harm, or if there is potential harm, to limit harm as much as possible. And I know that in talking with staff, there are very limited resources in our utility department. The fund is diminishing rather rapidly, thusly the existing source of funds is about to be depleted, which would create another action requirement by the council. In addition to that, it jeopardizes our One Water Capital Improvement Project program, which concerns me greatly. I'm leaning towards going with staff recommendation and adding a third item to, I think, capture what Councilmember Addis was referring to. And that would be to have staff bring back the program, and I'm adaptable with regard to this, I'm going to say in nine months, to be further reviewed for the possibility of additional changes by the council at that time. And I'm thinking, Councilmember Addis, of what you were saying, and it also gives us an opportunity, Councilmember Ford, to look at the success with regard to how we've handled, hopefully, no shut offs, but potential shut offs, and we could get information from staff on the viability of the fund at that time. So I'm leaning towards making, while I make the motion, to adopt Resolution Number 8621 to authorize the lapse by its own terms of Resolution Number 5421, which extended a 25% discount on the COVID-19 discount program through December 31st, 2021. And two, acknowledgement of the reinstatement of the prior utility discount program outlined in Resolution 64-19, which offers a 10% discount for qualifying customers and the reinstatement of late payment penalties to fund the program. And then number two, to receive and file staff's plan to reinstate water shut offs in full compliance with California State Bill SB 998. On the expiration of the state's executive order related to water shut offs, duly notifying customers according to the adopted discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment policy. And I'm adding number three, I'm asking staff to bring back a report in nine months on the viability of the program from a financial status and a full review of any shut offs or procedures associated with shut offs that have occurred.
I will second the motion.
Okay, motion by Mayor Hennig for staff recommendation plus added item number three, and seconded by Councilmember Heller, and I'm open to further discussion.
Could we define, Mayor, the discount program? Would you be open to friendly amendment, just to make sure we're clarifying?
Sure, what would you like the verbiage to be?
Discount program?
Sure. So duly amended. Councilmember Heller, is that okay with you?
Just so that I'm clear, what you proposed, Mayor, is to go back to the 10% discount program, follow the state with respect to moratorium on shut offs, and look at the entire program in nine months, is that correct?
In nine months, specifically the discount program, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I also want to understand any shut off information and how that process is working, thusly comprehensive, so.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Well, I, oh, yes, Councilmember Ford. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand a little.
No, no, you're fine. I've been very slowly unmuting and I'm turning off my video for random reasons, I don't know. But anyway, it's all operator failure. But I did want to, you know, in that information being brought back to us and being brought back to council in nine months, in that information about the water shut offs and how it, you know, if there are any, and how that laid out, can we request that there is information about, you know, if there's a disproportional, you know, amount of, what I'm getting at is, can we get whatever is legally allowed to be shared with us, information on those who may have been shut off, or, you know, that situation, whether they were single-person households, if they are on a fixed income, if they are families with children? Are we allowed to have any of that data? And if that's legally allowed, I guess that'd be a question for Mr. Newmeyer, if we could have any of that information. Maybe that would help us with decision-making going forward.
One suggestion might be that prior to any shut off, the customer is asked if they want to provide to the city voluntarily some information explaining, extenuating circumstances. And if I understand the direction Councilmember Ford's going, I think it's to determine whether, you know, the shut off is occurring despite best efforts of the customer, or whether the shut off occurred because someone may have just been using the moratorium to not make timely payments.
You got it. You captured it. Thank you.
Yeah, and all right, I don't, we don't currently collect that information and don't have a database for that. So it could create administrative challenge for us. Just want to make sure that's understood. You know, we don't have a system for doing that now. So we definitely will be able to at least give you the information that we can, that we currently collect on that, you know, to the extent, try to put it into a measurement. But again, we don't expect there to be shut offs because our plan is to do the outreach correctly and comprehensively enough where we don't run into that situation. But as of now, we don't collect that kind of demographic information on our customers.
And I did, I think I used the term comprehensive review to be brought back. So I think, I think staff understands the intent, and to the extent legally possible with regard to also the capacity of staff to do it, to try to get as much information as possible. My recollection is, we've had very few, if any, water shut offs. That's my recollection. So I don't think you're going to be seeing a lot of data, but I think it's good to bring it back and look.
Yeah, yeah. And I have to, you know, and just one thing I would like to add, though, that, you know, we, in the past, before this went into effect, I mean, it was pre-pandemic, so, you know, things could change in the future as far as amounts of shut offs and things like that. So, but no, I, my intent is not to add more, Mr. Collins, to anyone's plate. I just thought, you know, I wasn't aware of what we collected, what data we collected. And if that was something we collected, I would have liked to have had access to that. But understandable. Thank you.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes, one last comment. I'd like to thank Greg Colick and Sarah Johnson-Rios. It's extremely well-documented and communicated report, and it's very generous, in my opinion, in a way that many other cities are not as generous. And, I mean, San Luis Obispo is going to be starting to shut off water February 1st. So I think the whole plan and the way staff has approached it is remarkable and impressive and very much appreciated.
Thank you for that comment. And with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Hennig?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. I'm looking at my clock. Okay, we are on item C-3. This is the utility, excuse me, item C-4, I should turn the page and I'll get in the right place. Introduction and First Reading, Wordments Number 646, which updates Chapter 3.08 of the city's municipal code for purchasing system. And I'll be turning it over to, I believe, Ms. Johnson-Rios, if I'm correct.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor Hennig.
Thank you.
And I know you've got a few more items and we're at nine, so I'm going to give you a verbal overview of some of the high points here, and we can then dive into as much detail as you would like. And as a reminder, this is on page, there's a helpful comparison table on page 354 of your agenda packet, if you'd like to reference it. But before you tonight, our updates to Chapter 3.08 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code to update the city's purchasing policy. And this is in large part because the policy has been updated in bits and pieces over time. We've got different implementing resolutions, and so we have sort of a fragmented set of purchasing policies that we want to make more clear and consistent in the municipal code. In addition, there have been some recent changes. In addition, there have been some recent changes to state law, and we want to make sure that our code is consistent and compliant with state law. So broadly, then, these updates will increase the code's clarity, consistency, and compliance, the three Cs, and more specifically, these changes will accomplish that by doing the following. They clarify approval authority for all contracts and amendments, and I want to note here that the city manager's approval authority of $125,000 for non-public works projects stays the same, there's no change in that, so everything over that would still come to council. On the public project side, as defined in state law, the updates to the code would tie the city manager's approval authority to the competitive bidding threshold for those projects in state law, that's currently $200,000, so that would be a slight change from the $175,000 approval authority for public works projects up to that $200,000, so that we can try to have as few thresholds as possible and make this fairly straightforward for staff to implement over time as well. The updated code also allows department heads to approve contracts up to 25,000, as long as they follow all of the appropriate purchasing processes that are outlined in the code, and that will take a little bit of, a few items off of the city manager's desk for those smaller purchases. Right now, he has that authority, but only when he specifically assigns it. Updates also differentiate between the purchase of goods and services more clearly than the current version of the code does, and they clearly outline the purchasing processes and thresholds for both categories, goods and services, as well as the selection criteria in both cases. In addition, the updates include language to reflect the decentralized purchasing system that the city currently has, and it clarifies roles and responsibilities for the city manager and all of the department heads for their pieces in that decentralized system. The code is also updated in the area of paper procurement to be compliant with SB 1383, so no longer will the code make it voluntary or optional for us to pay attention to some of those environmentally friendly purchasing requirements, instead it will reference all of the state requirements, and we're going to be starting to report on that in January through the IWMA, so the code is consistent in that regard. And it retains the ability for us to offer local preference to local businesses where that's possible and legal under state law. And then finally, since we can't capture all of the administrative details in the municipal code, and that's not really the intent of the code, the language here provides for a purchasing policy, an implementation document that the city manager would approve and modify from time to time, consistent with the municipal code, and that would provide the implementing direction to staff. That would be housed in one document as well, so we're really trying to get rid of, again, this piecemeal documentation set that we have now within a bit of different resolutions and administrative directions. And those are the highlights, as I mentioned, there is a table that compares side by side the existing code and the new code and all of the key provisions. So with that, I will open it up for questions, and I want to note that the city attorney's office helped with this update, and we do have one of Chris's colleagues, Brian Wright and Brian Wright-Bushman, on the line to answer any questions as well.
Okay, Sarah, thank you, I especially appreciated page 354 and 355, the summary table really made it easy for me.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that, sorry, Siri's talking to me on my phone, I don't know, I said Sarah, not Siri, so, anyway, thank you so much for that, I do appreciate that. With that, I'll open it up for any council questions, Councilmember Barton, I see your hand, please.
Yes, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, I've never seen such a nice, crisp, clear explanation of purchasing policy, the system's really, really great the way that this is laid out, so there's no question, it's very, very clear, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Heller?
Yes, my question is this, this looks like a heavy lift to me, but tell me, how will it take you to implement this policy? Do you just print it off and people start obeying the policy the next day, or do you do training, I mean, this is good stuff, but how is this going to roll down?
Sure, that's a great question, and I wish it were, I wish we had an easy button. The next steps, if you proceed tonight, will be that staff would draft, excuse me for my voice, I'm a little under the weather, so staff would draft the purchasing policy implementing document, we have bits and pieces of that now, but we'll package that within the next month or two, and then, yes, we will absolutely do training for staff in all of the departments at all levels, from department heads to the implementing and administrative staff that will spit these documents most frequently, and there's a big tie in with our ERP, our financial system, so there will be training for all of that, and we think that having a clear framework will help, will help staff have the clear direction that they need to be able to comply, so that's really a key intent of this.
So we're looking at three months, six months, something like that, do you think, Sarah?
So the policy would be in place after the second reading of the ordinance, and so we could begin incrementally applying that, so we would start immediately following those purchasing thresholds and procedures, but it would take probably a few months to get staff fully trained and all of our implementing documentation in place.
Sure, okay, thank you, that's my only question, thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Councilmember Addis? Yes, please.
It's really more of a comment, but ever since I was on CFAC, maybe four years ago, we've been talking about streamlining, getting better, having more policies that made sense, were easy to follow, and reduce time and effort, so I just want to appreciate this item for that, and I know it took a long time to put together, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for item C-4, any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item, public comment is now open, and Anthony, do we have public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Heading, I see Betty Winholz with her hand raised, okay, Betty, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you, I'm desirous to comment on this because it's stated in the staff report that this is, the decentralization is kind of the way you've been operating, even though the books say it should be done differently, and the books were done that way back when I was on council, because we had, we inherited a decentralized process, and it did not work, it was right-handed, not know what the left hand was doing in terms of finance, not knowing what the departments were doing, and surely with perhaps better guidelines, that won't happen, but I just need to put in my two cents that I'm more for a centralized way of operating purchasing rather than decentralized, thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, other public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Heading, currently I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Sarah, it's great to have a foundation under the building, thank you for doing that, Brian, thank you for your assistance in crafting this, because perhaps we're not spending a lot of time on this, doesn't diminish the importance and the absolute necessity of making this happen, I realize that this took a lot of work, and the implementation will be something that will incorporate a lot of resources, but this, in my mind, will help protect the city and correct a lot of inconsistencies that exist now, so I am supportive of staff's recommendation, and I'll make the motion to introduce by title only and only a way further reading of ordinance number 646, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, amending Morro Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 3.08 of Title III, to update the city's purchasing system.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heading for staff recommendations, second by, tie, Councilmember Addis, I see you in the far left, so there you are, up in the corner.
It was, I think it was Councilmember Barton.
Was it Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Second by Councilmember Barton, you got it, my apologies, you guys sounded alike, sorry. Any further discussion or comments? Yes, Councilmember Heller?
Yeah, I just want to re-advocize what you said, Mayor, Sarah, this is just great work, and your table was very helpful, and this is one of these kind of quantum leap moments, I think, for the city, and you just did an outstanding job, thank you for all your work on this, and I know Scott Collins had his hand in there as well, so thank you both very much.
Thank you for that, and with that, we will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great, thank you again for all your work, we appreciate it, Sarah, get well soon, please. Okay, that brings us to item C-5, this is authorization for the city council comments to the National Marine Sanctuaries Program regarding the potential CHUMASH Heritage National Marine Sanctuary designation process, and reiterate previous opposition to National Marine Sanctuary and local waters until critical management issues are addressed, and I believe I'm going to be turning this over to Mr. Collins and Mr. Endersby, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Heading, good evening, council, I'm going to steal the assistant city manager's term and say, I wish there was an easy button on this too, but this is a long history to this, and it's complicated, and there's a lot of things at play, so I'll do my best to try and get through it with all the information presented and get something in front of you that makes some sense. So we're recommending that the city council reiterated its previous opposition to the National Marine Sanctuaries in our local waters, this has been ongoing for 20-plus years, until some critical sanctuary governance issues are resolved, as outlined a little further in the staff report that I'll get into, and authorize the mayor to make some comments to the National Marine Sanctuary Program with regard to the proposed CHUMASH Heritage National Marine Sanctuary, I think you heard some public comments earlier at the beginning of this meeting, and the general public comment about that. Several alternatives, and I don't think these are all the possible alternatives, but these are the, kind of, first three most obviously come up, the city could rescind its previous opposition and supply comments to NOAA, which is the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, apologize, it's probably going to be kind of acronym-heavy, I'll try and explain those. We could rescind that opposition and provide whatever comments we choose to provide on the CHUMASH proposal, we could take no action on marine sanctuaries generally, but provide comments on the proposed sanctuary that's up for comment right now, or could take no action on either of the two items and just let time pass, and as I'll explain later, there's a pretty long public process that will occur as the sanctuary, potential sanctuary designation process moves forward. No physical impact to this at this time, so nothing to consider there. So the background here is, the National Marine Sanctuaries Act was created in 1972, and was probably really born not long after the oil spill down at Santa Barbara in 1969, it came out of some action by NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, to create a marine sanctuary program, originally had a different name, changed it over the years, but really it was a federal act to offer various protections to the nation's marine environment and Great Lakes, due to many different possible ways of protecting something, due to conservation efforts, recreational attributes, ecological attributes, historical attributes, scientific, cultural, archaeological, kind of the gamut of all potential things in the marine environment that could serve to be protected. The current national marine sanctuaries that are in place now, I believe there's 15 of them, vary from a site that protects one single US Civil War wreck, the USS Monitor that we all learned about in school, in grade school, the Ironclad Ship Monitor, the vast expanses of ocean, probably the largest of which are on the West Coast here. First National Marine Sanctuary is established in 1974, is originally kind of a top-down process by which either Congress or the president, the administration, proposed putting in marine sanctuaries in place, and then a federal process took place in which, like I say, is kind of top-down. It's now morphed into, in recent years, they changed that program into a bottom-up one, in which people or organizations or entities can make nominations to the National Marine Sanctuaries Program, and then those nominations, quote unquote, sit on a shelf until the federal government decides to act upon it. Currently in California, like I said, there's 15 National Marine Sanctuaries right now nationwide, I think there's a 16th that's pending approval on, I want to say, the Great Lakes, the ones in California are the Greater Faroe Loans, National Marine Sanctuary, which is previously called the Gulf of the Faroe Loans, Cordell Bank, those are both sort of north and outside of San Francisco, Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, which is, of course, off Monterey Bay and stretches down into Canberra, the southern terminus, that is Canberra, and in the Channel Islands, National Marine Sanctuary, which is entirely offshore in the Channel Islands off of Santa Barbara and Metro. So, like I said, if, now, if a sanctuary proposal gets nominated and NOAA accepts that nomination, it gets put on a shelf, so to speak, for consideration, the CHUMASH Heritage Sanctuary got nominated back in 2015, and they normally have a five-year shelf life, and in 2020, that nomination was sort of re-upped, so to speak, and left on the shelf for future consideration, and then more recently, that nomination was put forward by NOAA to move through the designation process. The nominating process and the acceptance of a nominating process is pretty long and convoluted, I put several links in your staff report, basically it has to meet certain national significance criteria and management considerations to get on the list and to be considered, and then NOAA will go through a citing process, or an establishment process if it meets all those criteria, and then either Congress or the administration decides to move forward. So as I said before, the CHUMASH Heritage Proposal was nominated, was accepted, NOAA announced just before Thanksgiving, a week or two before Thanksgiving, that they were going to move that forward towards a designation, into the designation process, which is the first step in about, no, a year to three process for a sanctuary to potentially get nominated. This is the very first portion of that process, it's a 60-day comment period, that comment period was extended, Mayor Heading offered a letter to NOAA to request an extension, as did, I believe, the Morro Bay Chamber, fishermen's organizations and others, and they granted about three more weeks on the comment period due to the holidays, and especially with agencies like us and entities like us that have trouble, you know, putting together meetings over the holidays because of the shortened schedules. So the next steps in the process include public scoping meetings, they've already done a couple Zoom meetings online, I believe there was one a couple days ago and one maybe middle of last week, so after they get all the public comment that they get, they'll draft a sanctuary proposal that includes what the potential boundaries might be, what the regulations might be, what the management plan might be, the basic elements of a National Marine Sanctuary or the designation document, which is sort of the, I don't know, the roadmap for what the sanctuary wants to be and what it wants to do, and as I said earlier, they can, they can do and protect many different things, depending on what the particular proponents of that sanctuary put forward. And so the designation documents will sort of be the roadmap of what the sanctuary wants to be and what it wants to do, and the management plan will be how they're going to achieve that, so maybe the goals and objectives is another way of sort of paraphrasing it. And then once it gets through, through the, the management plan gets developed, and they've considered all the public comments, NOAA will make a final, NOAA will make a final decision, NOAA will make the final decision as to whether or not they want to continue moving that nomination forward and prepare final documents. Eventually, and I'm not the expert on this, I've, you know, taken a little bit of a crash course in the last couple of weeks on this part of the process, because we've never gone this far before, but eventually the governor and Congress then review, the governor of the state, which the sanctuary is being proposed, review it, and then Congress will review the documents before final designation. And as I said earlier, in recent discussions with sanctuary staff, we were told this probably takes about a year to get through the process, if you look on NOAA's website, they say two to three years, so I'm probably saying anywhere between one and three years, and it probably depends on the process and how much input there is, and what sort of changes get proposed, and where NOAA goes with it. So that's kind of the background portion of the sanctuary program and how sanctuaries come to be and what they do. You know, like, as I said, sanctuaries are chiefly put in place to protect certain ecological, cultural, historical attributes, they provide potential environmental, social, economic benefits to the regions in which they're established, protecting regions from oil spills. protecting regions from oil spills. Prohibition of oil drilling is a fairly common attribute to a fair number of marine sanctuaries. So they can provide protection against offshore oil establishment in the waters that they're designated in. And of course, council, you know, were supportive, and the city has always been supportive of those sorts of goals. But again, sort of the, some of the management issues that have been experienced by cities that are bordering marine sanctuaries and by fishing organizations and fishermen that have to live with the sanctuaries have been troubling. And that has led to the city's sort of historical opposition to sanctuaries until those issues are resolved. There's sort of three primaries. So the city of Morro Bay is currently on record. We've done a number of resolutions and opposition. The most recent was, I think, resolution back in 2012, resolution 1812. And based on three primary sort of governance problems. One was sanctuary conflicts with commercial fishing industry, primarily over sanctuary influence in the fishery management regulation scheme and sanctuaries advocating for more restrictive fishery management than the industry would prefer. And the industry would prefer that fishery management be left to Fish and Wildlife Commission in the state of California, Pacific Fishery Management Council overall in the country. And so that's where the industry would rather it be is with those councils and fishery regulators rather than with sanctuaries. The second kind of issue of conflict is with communities and working waterfronts boarding on sanctuaries, primarily concerns over and issues with dredge material disposal. Sanctuaries generally don't allow bottom disturbance or negative effects on bottom materials. And dredging obviously is taking up bottom materials. Typically, what a sanctuary will do is exclude a harbor from the sanctuary boundaries, but there's still potential issues with dredge material disposal near or around the sanctuaries that have caused some burdensome regulatory and other issues with some of the higher agencies, districts to the north, with in particular the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. And then the third sort of governance issue that we've had concern with historically has been the Sanctuary Advisory Councils. They're appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the Sanctuary Superintendent, and there's no real local accountability. I think the National Marine Sanctuaries Act by its nature is not a local entity. It's a national entity, but there's the Sanctuary Advisory Councils that are there to provide stakeholder input. But without that input being a little more binding and serving at the pleasure of the superintendent, there's been concerns that the Sanctuary Advisory Council members have historically, some of them have been put there kind of being friendly to the sanctuary program as opposed to being sort of watchdogs to the program. So those are sort of the three main concerns that we've had over the last couple of decades. So I spoke earlier, the last resolution we did, 1812, really kind of held up those three main points. I think you received some input from the Commercial Fishermen's Organization earlier, and they've submitted some letters to NOAA on what their concerns are, which embody these three issues and some others that they're concerned about. Again, we're recommending that the council continue its opposition and potentially, you know, a change to that opposition we see could potentially come if those issues could be resolved through the designation process of this sanctuary. And so what we're proposing the council to adopt or to consider are, I think, I've got about four main points in here. First one being that the Chumash Heritage Sanctuary Designation Document and Management Plan recognize the cultural and economic benefits of both native fishers and modern commercial fisheries. I think the two tribes, the Salinan and Chumash nations, were both maritime in their nature. And so probably can be considered the original commercial fishers. So there's no reason that a National Marine Sanctuary couldn't recognize and honor those cultures and traditions and protect and enhance commercial and recreational fisheries the same ways it protects and enhances environmental or other cultural issues that the sanctuary is meant to protect. So that's the first comment we would have on, recommended comment we'd have on the Chumash proposal. The second we would have is that, as I spoke earlier, on most of the harbors that are bordered, at least in California, on the sanctuaries that touch the shore, mainly the Monterey Bay Sanctuary. Typically, the borderline between the sanctuary ending is at the harbor mouth or maybe just outside, depending on where their dredge material disposal areas are. Our federal line, you know, between, it's called the Coleridge Line. It's typically where, between the harbor jetties where Coast Guard jurisdiction begins and ends. And that's where the sanctuary jurisdiction typically begins and ends in the Monterey Bay Sanctuary. We recommend that that boundary be expanded out at least five miles to fully incorporate.
Eric, pardon me one second. I'm going to need to entertain a motion to go past 9:30.
I'll move to go past 9:30, but I'd love for us to stop by 11:00.
I will have a comment on this that may help that, but go ahead. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Addis, second by Councilmember Heller to go past 9:30. I think the motion was a hard stop at 11:00. Is that acceptable to you, Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Okay, motion at a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Dana Swanson.
Oh, there you are. Apology.
No worries.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Sorry, Eric, go ahead, please.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And I'll definitely not go 11 o'clock. I'll try not to. So again, recommending setting the boundaries a minimum of five miles out just so that we are well clear of working waterfront needs and issues, and especially with our dredging. Our two EPA-established dredge material disposal areas are, one's about a three-quarters of a mile south of the harbor and the other's about a mile north on the beach. So we want those to be well clear of any sanctuary. The third one would be the Sanctuary Advisory Council, which is commonly called the SAC. Would the Chumash Sanctuary be populated and managed in such a manner as it fosters and creates local representation, input, and to some degree, control? Meaning that the members don't necessarily serve completely at the pleasure of the Sanctuary Superintendent, but are offered up by the constituents and stakeholders of which they represent, particularly resource-dependent stakeholders and tribes. Be represented in the true manner that would indicate that they're functional, effective on the Sanctuary Advisory Council as opposed to just being there to provide sort of non-regulatory input or non-binding input. We'd like to see some sort of a little more binding input. And the fourth item is the Chumash Sanctuary Boundaries provide an adequate buffer. We're recommending about five miles around the offshore wind farms. The Chumash proposal originally was actually incorporated, what's now sort of being referred to as the 399 area, the offshore wind area that BOM is considering. The Chumash proposal was put on the books before that 399 area was really sort of established as it is today. And so NOAA is now recommending that it obviously not incorporate the offshore wind area because that's an industrial use and not necessarily fitting inside a National Marine Sanctuary. But it still butts right up to it. And I think, we believe from the standpoint of vessel operations and all the activity that will have to occur in a wind farm, that a little larger buffer would be more appropriate. And they'll also have to consider how to run the power cables. Assuming these offshore wind farms are established, how to run the power cables through a sanctuary because those are going to have to be buried to a certain degree on the bottom. And obviously, they're going to create bottom disturbance. So some sort of a corridor carved around, carved out of the sanctuary to allow that sort of stuff. And vessel traffic, obviously, there's going to be pretty heavy commercial vessel traffic to and from an offshore wind farm. So the sanctuary is going to have to have some sort of accommodation for that and not be an overly burdensome regulatory entity on top of offshore wind. So I'll try and conclude, wrap this up if I can. So benefits of sanctuaries, again, you know, what we see, sort of the primary benefits, we believe, or I believe, are research, education, outreach, science, you know. Certainly, there's been economic benefits up in the Monterey Bay Sanctuary, probably primarily because of Mbari, the Monterey Bay Research Institute that sprung up there. We think sanctuaries are great at that. Certainly not trying to present entirely negative picture here. But we'd like to see some balance and accommodating what some of these governance problems have been over the years. We thought this was going to be kind of a rush job and get this on because it'd be our only chance before the original deadline, which was January 10th, for these comments. And we wouldn't have another council meeting before that. But again, NOAA has extended that deadline to January 31st, so we do have a little bit more time, which is nice, and it was great that NOAA provided that. And again, this comment period is first in a fairly long process of public and stakeholder engagement of sanctuary development. There'll be further opportunities for the city to engage and be involved, advisory bodies and such, to have our say in what the sanctuary may or may not do. Again, we support, you know, the stated goals of the sanctuary program in general. We'd like to see some changes to make a little more accommodating for the issues we've raised over several years. And hopefully, they can get addressed and resolved. I believe the sanctuary designation process and the management plan could resolve these if there is the will of the sanctuary program to end the sanctuary proposals to embody those things into this Chumash Heritage Sanctuary. I guess I'll leave it at that. I think I've said enough. Any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Complex, comprehensive overview. We appreciate it. I know the subject is something that we've looked at for a number of years as a city and has many moving parts, but thank you for capturing those as succinctly as you did. I'm going to open it up for Councilmember questions. Councilmember Heller, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm not sure if Eric can, you can answer this, or the mayor perhaps, I might know. But obviously, it looks like a long involved process. It looks like the ultimate decision will be made pending approval by the governor of California and the United States Congress. Is that correct?
I believe so. I don't know if it's a thing that goes to a vote of Congress or whether it can be administratively approved.
I believe it's administratively approved.
Okay.
And is it something that typically if it gets to that level, that it will be approved? Or is it generally quite controversial even when it gets to that point? Or maybe that's not a question anybody can answer. I'm just not familiar with marine sanctuaries and their path to becoming marine sanctuaries.
I'm assuming NOAA has moved this forward with the general nod of the Biden administration. So if it's administratively approved, would lend one to believe that the administration is moving it forward. Therefore, the administration will approve it when it gets to that point.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions. Thank you, Eric, very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Other questions for Eric? Looking around, seeing no hands. Okay. Then I will go ahead and open a public comment. This is public comment for item C dash five in our agenda this evening. Public comment is now open. And Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Heading. I see some raised hands here. I see Wayne Moody. Okay, Wayne, you should be unmuted.
It's welcome, Wayne.
Wayne Moody, you are unmuted. Okay, Mayor, why not move to the next?
Yeah, then if Wayne comes back, we'll let him in. That's no problem.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I would like to ask Dana to play a short video of what happened to two surfers who were surfing in the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary and used a personal watercraft for personal safety without getting a sanctuary permit. This shows the response of the sanctuary and how they bullied the surfers. The surfers decided it was best to settle for the $2,500 fine.
I have no volume.
There was no volume. Let me read one, please.
My name is Scott Jarrett. I'm here to talk to you about why expanding the sanctuary in your area is not a good idea. Back in 1992, when they first were forming a National Marine Monterey Bay Sanctuary, I thought it was a great idea to protect our surf spots and our people in Monterey Bay. Several years later, I can tell you that it's not a good idea. I'll give you three reasons why. Being a big wave surfer, we use personal watercraft as a lifesaving device when big waves. Back in 2011, me and my surfing partner, Jeff Martin, my, he's right around me. Jeff, he's surrounding. The day after, we decided to go out to surf. Took our lifesaving device with us. We returned after a few hours of surfing and met my new officer. He wrote us a ticket for $500 for operating my personal watercraft in Monterey Bay Sanctuary. Ticket didn't really bother me. It was in a letter that said that if we decided to fight it, it could be up to $140,000. So virtually, we're fighting a ticket for $500, wrote me a $140,000. That's just crazy. Needless to say, we decided to fight it, and a few days after, we gave him notice that we were going to fight it. Armed guard came to, a NOAA armed officer came to work, and gave us another ticket for $2,500. Few hours later, the NOAA pulled our keys and we went. Attorney contacted us to make sure that we got that and to let us know that if we just needed to fight it, the price would continue to go up, virtually telling me, until you say you're not going to fight it anymore. Every time we continue, let's say that we're going to continue this, they're going to just send the armed guard with a new ticket. This just seems so un-American. Not right. Also, the bureaucracy made decisions to ban us without a single bit of scientific data or scientific evidence that had anything to do with this. They used a river in New Zealand. They used wet lanes and stuff like that to form an opinion of why we couldn't operate. Number one, we don't surf in a river in New Zealand. Number two...
The three minutes is up, sir.
We served a negotiation.
The, thank you. Thank you for that. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Judy Salamaka with her hand raised.
Okay.
You should be...
Welcome, Judy.
Good evening, Mayor Heading and councilmembers. I'm Judy Salamaka, and I live in the neighborhood founded by Franklin Riley, our founder. In the early 19, in the 1900s, Central Valley visitors like myself came to Morro Bay to fish and wish that they could live our coastal lifestyle. I'm one of the lucky ones. My entire family now lives and works here. None of us are fishermen, but we treasure the heartland values of Morro Bay's strong community work ethic built by generations of Fisher families. Mayor Heading, December 6, you invited community comment regarding the sanctuary. And I wanted to be here tonight to sit through the meeting just for this purpose. I sincerely believe that we have the right counsel, the staff, the chamber, the business leadership, trying to make the best decisions for all of our residents. My hope is that we treasure and preserve what makes us unique on the central coast, the reality of our brave World War II veterans that expanded our waterfront and our Fisher families, building a working waterfront economy that attracts visitors and investors. And let us not forget the natives, our Chumash, our natives that were the original fishers, as Eric so well said. For almost 20 years, I have been blessed to... For almost 20 years, I have been blessed to write good news stories for most of San Luis Obispo's newspaper publications. 15 years ago, I was excited and then deflated to interview a community icon, Jeremiah O'Brien. I learned then about this proposed sanctuary. I had to tell Jeremiah that I couldn't write the story. The fight the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization was fighting was not a good news story. And here today, we're allowing the potential sanctuary to adversely impact our Fisher families and our tourism economy. And regardless of our shouts of no, literally three times now by the Morro Bay Council, and the comment to support this proposed sanctuary is up again for the fifth time. The manager of the Pacific Coast Sanctuary is mandated to gather local support before a slow county sanctuary can be created. He has asked for comments germane to how Morro Bay would prefer to have the sanctuary developed. The Morro Bay fishermen learned the hard way, if we give him an inch, he will gain his mandate to add another 7,000 square miles to our, against, of our fishery. Tens of thousands of dollars have already been, and human hours have already vanished.
Judy, I'm sorry, the three minutes is up. Do you want to just wrap it up?
I want to ask you to support staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Heding. I see Alan Allward with the hand raised. Okay, Alan, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for hearing our comments. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, that, the little background for Scott Jared there. He, he was saying, and it wasn't really clear to hear, but they started with a ticket for $500, but they told him if he fought it, it could go as high as 140. And now that process is through the NOAA Judiciary Special Branch that they have. They have their own judges, their own prosecutors, and the carpet up for you and show you what lies underneath crawling about. We're glad that we have an extended comment period and possibly an opportunity to, to supply you with letters from congressmen complaining about things that happened. And it's, it's just, it's just really tragic. The Sanctuary Advisory Council, the administrator of the sanctuary gives them their agenda. They can only reply to him. They're not allowed to reply to the press. In the Monterey Bay Sanctuary, they were nominations made by harbor masters, the CMAC, nominations made by all the commercial fishing groups in the state. Where they tried to get around that, and they tried to leave the, the spot open for other people to apply for it. There's just been a lot of egregious things that have gone on, and the council came down on our side once before, but it's a new council now, and, and, and we feel like we might need to educate you. I mean, it's like the guy, like Scott Jared said, it sounds like a great idea on face, but when you learn the details, it's a little bit scary. And what, what the local governments in Monterey found was that things like, you know, difficulties disposing of their dredging material, difficulties when they had a cliff that needed to be armored so the houses wouldn't fall into the sea, difficulties with desalinization plants. Agriculture had lots of problems. They were pressing the water controlling, a water quality control boards to put even more stringent standards on farmers. It's just, it's just kind of a tragic story. Now, maybe, maybe the, the chance exists, you know, to, to undo some of this, but it's got to start with a robust and independent Sanctuary Advisory Council that can raise in, you know, their, raise problems and raise them publicly and, and have the ability to, if things get out of control, and, and the problem is the, the guy who-
Alan, Alan, you have to wrap it up. Your three minutes is up, sir.
Okay, well, the guy, the problem is the guy that was running the Monterey Sanctuary at this time is now the Western Regional Manager, Bill Duros, and that's who we're hearing this from. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Alan. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see Tom Hafer with his hand up. Okay, Tom, you should be unmuted.
Welcome, Tom. Tom, are you there?
Tom, are you there? I'm unmuting you. Are you there? Okay, uh, not seeing Tom unmute yet, so I'm going to go ahead and move to the next person, To Steve. I'm not going to try to pronounce that last name, but To Steve, last name starting with an S.
Okay, Steve?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Heding, Mayor Heding and members of the council, my name is Steve Shybrower. I'm not a city resident, but I am a retired harbor master who worked at both Santa Cruz and Monterey harbors over a 42-year period. I was working with the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments during the 1992 designation process for the Monterey Sanctuary. So I heard all the community concerns and discussions, you know, for the proposed sanctuary. I've also served on the Sanctuary's Advisory Council, also called the SAC, for much of the sanctuary's existence. I now serve as a consultant to the fishing industry, but my experiences with the sanctuaries do go far beyond fishing concerns. I ask that you support your staff's recommendations, but I will offer a few further thoughts. If you are concerned about having a strong voice for important decisions about local resources, you're right to be concerned. I recall being instructed, maybe lectured is actually a better word, by the Monterey Superintendent more than once that the Sanctuary Advisory Council members are to assist the Ashbyan Sanctuary program to achieve its goals. Concerns expressed from the agriculture seat, the business seat, the harbor seat, that was me, and others, that we were there to represent our constituents' interests really fell on deaf ears. Even AMBAG, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments that has 22 elected officials, wrote twice to the sanctuary asking them to create separation between sanctuary management and the workings of the SAC. That advice or that recommendation was completely ignored. Also, the Monterey Bay, I'm sorry, the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce also wrote twice, asking the same thing, that also was ignored. So I respectfully suggest that the council's comments to NOAA be very clear that you believe the SAC should not be under the sanctuary's management's control, but organized under some local authorities. To close, I wrote to the sanctuary a few years ago, asking if the culture, heritage, and economic contributions of fishing to coastal communities were among the resources that a national marine sanctuary should protect, preserve, and promote. The answer in writing was no. And sanctuary officials view local resources, once the sanctuary occurs, as national resources, downplaying local needs. Thank you so much for considering my comments.
Thank you, Steve. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, yes, it looks like Tom Hafer has unmuted. Okay, Tom, you're-
Welcome, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Tom Hafer. I'm a commercial fisherman out of Morro Bay. I'm also the president of the Morro Bay Fishing Organization. Thank you for your past position on opposing the Schumash National Marine Sanctuary, and I hope you continue to oppose it. I would like to discuss one of the reasons why the fishermen do not trust the sanctuary. As you know, we ended up in 2007 with 29 NPAs in our region from Pigeon Point to Point Concepcion. During the selection process, the fishermen spent two years meeting with, developing a map of NPAs based on the requirements of the scientific criteria. Our proposal utilized the firsthand information and knowledge of Fishers and scientists' knowledge to create an MPAs network. The environmental community developed their own proposal. It included most of the prime fishing areas. It included several areas close to port and over 204 square miles of NPAs. It took over 60% of the hard bottom where most of the nearshore fish live. The live nearshore fishery is one of the main fisheries in Morro Bay. The sanctuary then decided to fund a representative that would develop their own sanctuary proposal, ignoring the promise to stay out of fishery management. The sanctuary collaborated with the environmental community and basically pushed the proposal forward, and that was the end because of the sanctuaries, that was the end because the sanctuary influenced, the fishermen's proposal had thrown out and not even considered. As a result, we have four NPAs within 23 miles of our port. And our small boat fishermen, which are 90% of the nearshore fleet, have been forced to fish in small areas close to port or forced to travel much further to go fishing. So when you hear the sanctuary representatives say they do not get involved in fishery regulation, it is not true. They may, they may not directly regulate fishing, but their influence and power provide support to anti-fishing agendas. The Schumash Sanctuary has been moved forward only due to executive order by the president. Otherwise, it would not happen. This sanctuary has been denied over the last several years because the San Luis Obispo and Morro Bay, Port San Luis government agencies have not, have come out against it, as well as the fishermen and the agricultural community.
Need to wrap it up, Tom. Time is up.
Okay, it's another, it's just another layer, unnecessary layer of government regulations over our harbors, farming, ranching, fishing, water, and air that already have multiple protections. I just hope-
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You better. Thank you. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Heding. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment, then bring it back to-
Mayor, you're muted.
Am I muted?
For me, you were.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It could be me.
I'm sorry, I'm going to close, I closed public comment and brought it back to council. Maybe I was the only one that heard that, but it sounded good. Anyway, so I'll go ahead and open it up for discussion. Who'd like to start us off this evening?
I've, I've got a comment.
Councilmember Burton, please.
It's, it's interesting listening to, reading the report, listening to the report, and now listening to all of the input. And it, it sounded, it sounded great to start with, but I'm, I'm concerned about the, the local control aspects of it. I'm not sure with our plans for wind, for the electrical grid, I'm just not sure that we're going to be able to have things go the way we'd like. So I'm looking at the letter from 2020, and I've underlined the part in the middle of that letter about the true local control. I'm wondering if it's even possible to get that.
Okay. Good, good point. Some other comments? Yes, Councilmember Heller, I see your hand, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is really interesting because you have very conflicting interests with very serious things at stake. Our local fishermen, which over the years have been continually restricted in where they can fish, and what they can fish, and how they can fish. And then we have the challenge of honoring former peoples who lived on these lands that we now occupy.
Exactly.
For me, frankly, I think this is government overreach, and I, I support the council's previous opposition to the sanctuary. I don't need to say too much more about it, in my opinion, but I am definitely siding with the fishermen of Morro Bay on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Appreciate that. Captured that. Looking for other comments. Ah, Councilmember Ford, thank you. It's funny how, you know, with Zoom, you move up to the far corner, so I have to follow that. I'm sorry.
You're fine, actually.
I found you.
You found it right as I put it up, so your timing was perfect, actually.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm, I'm in this weird, I feel torn because I'm pro-climate action. I want to preserve our, our bay and the fisheries, you know, from oil spills and all the things, and I'm, I'm, you know, I, I support our, our fishing industry. I, I don't want to see them lose their ability to, to do what they need to do to make a living, to support their, their families. I understand that we are a fishing community. You know, my worry is if we, if we continue to say no, we're making a statement that we, you know, that we're not, I don't know, I just, I feel like there's just not enough information either way for me to make a well-educated decision, whether to say yes, I support, or no, I don't. And, and I don't, and I, I just, that really bothers me because I, I want to make the right choice, and I, and I certainly support all of these suggestions that we will be sending to NOAA. I think they're all amazing suggestions because they're exactly what my concerns are. My concern is about, you know, if we don't dredge our bay, what happens, right? What happens to our bay besides fishing? What happens to flooding issues? What happens to all these different things that could happen in our bay that can affect businesses and our estuary and, and all these other things? So, I don't know, I, it just doesn't sit right with me saying yes or no that we support the sanctuary without having the roadmap, the roadmap of what, what it actually looks like once they take in all this, all the comments during this comment section. So, I don't know. I, I guess my comment is that I just, I, I just feel very, I don't, I don't feel like I'm leaning towards one way or the other more.
I, I feel you. I think, it's the best I can say is I, I get you. I understand. It's a, and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I wanted to-
No.
Please, if you're-
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I, I just, I see that, I see that there's so many positives to having a sanctuary, but I see all the negatives as well. And I think it's important that I, you know, I'm listening to our community members who are desperate. I hear the desperation in their voices. I understand this is their livelihood. And I also understand that this decision we make may or may not have any input on what this decision-making process moves forward, but, you know, what we say as a city, I think matters. You know, I think one vote in an election can turn an election, right? As far, and I think one, you know, we might be a small town, but I think even our one comment to NOAA moving forward can make, make or break a decision in that process. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that we're insignificant in this process of the decision-making on whether or not this sanctuary takes place. So, I just don't feel like I have enough, I don't have enough information to, to say yes, I'm for, or no, I'm against.
And, and that's a fair position. And I'll, I'm going to make sure I'm not muted. And I'll make sure I'm not muted. I'll go ahead and comment. You know, I guess, obviously, I didn't write the staff report, nor did any council member staff write the report, but the way I look at it, it could have said, we support it if, or we oppose it if not, if that makes sense. And if you think about that, it, you know, we've all talked about those that have spoken about these conflicting issues. One, you know, the, the desire to honor the heritage of our original peoples and people groups and to preserve the integrity of that history and to offer recognition to those that preceded us that were the original inhabitants of this land, that speaks very loudly to me. The preservation of the environment in terms of ensuring that, you know, things that are intrusive or obstructive to the ocean and, and everything that's included in that is not intruded on about, by things that could potentially pollute, destroy, and/or harm that ocean. And then, you know, as that, as I think about all of those things and a great desire for that preservation, I think about an industry that has been important to the history of the city for many years and talk to a number, I've been to a number of meetings locally with our fishing industry. I've talked to folks in Monterey. Steve, I always pronounce his name the wrong way, but Shy Blower, who spoke, was a former harbor master in Monterey, who tells, I think, true stories about the representation that the impact on fishing would be minimal and not intrusive or obstructionist, yet the experience was very much different, and indeed it was. And then I attended a week ago the chamber convene meeting, again, of fishing industry constituents, and listened to real concerns about further loss of livelihood and the ability to provide, you know, food, not only for us, but for the world in essence, and to maintain the economic integrity of that industry which continues to get hit. And also wanting to, in my mind, you know, preserve the integrity of the development of offshore wind, which is good for the environment, economically going to be very good for Morro Bay, and needs to be protected and the other issues as mentioned with dredging and protecting our harbor and so forth and so on. And, and so, one of the things I hear and what I thought would be good to do would be to take further comment now that the timeline has been extended. And perhaps as Councilmember Heller seems to be ready to move forward with staff recommendation, I hear, you know, Councilmember Ford basically indicating that, you know, maybe there's a need for further information. And I'm, I'm looking at, at the possibility, now that I found out as of today or yesterday, that they've extended the comment period to 31st of January 2022 from January the 10th. And then again, I think there are certain council members that want to move forward that have enough information, again, that are ready to make a decision on this. So, you know, I'm, I may be going around in circles, but I'm trying to land, so to speak. Today, I find myself actually supporting the staff recommendation. And the reason for that is I do believe that there are going to be other opportunities to weigh in on this and that this is going to evolve in terms of the position that Morro Bay takes. But I'm, I'm very concerned about the lack of an adequate voice for our fishing industry and the further potential economic losses that could occur without mitigations. And I think they've been outlined pretty succinctly in this report. I also am concerned about the inability to have any local voice or control. You've heard about the SAC or the committees that are formed, and basically they're, in my opinion, they appear to be dysfunctional with regard to really having any significant input locally. And so, you know, for all of those reasons, and after weighing this very heavily through a long, long period of time, I'm, I am ready to move forward with supporting the staff recommendation as Councilmember Heller is. And I'll stop and take further comments. Councilmember Addis, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate, I want to appreciate the thoughtful discussion and thank those who came this evening and provided public comment. I know it takes a lot to stay on a meeting until 10:00 at night to give your comment, and so I know this issue is important. And I want to echo many of the things that people said, that the concerns from the fishing industry are absolutely real, that the federal government has not always been a consistent friend, either to local cities, local governments, or to industries. At times it is, and at times it isn't. I do think that dredging is critical for our harbor. But I also want to talk about, we just declared a climate emergency. It wasn't that long ago that we had to pass a resolution expanding our existing resolution against offshore oil drilling to have a resolution against onland oil drilling because there were threats of fracking in our county. And so as federal administrations change, so do the threats around oil drilling, around degradation of our coast, and around things that Morro Bay deeply believes in. I also have on my mind the late Fred Collins, may he rest in peace, and his deep desire to see this move forward, but also, as the mayor stated, people who have been around here for thousands and thousands of years and where they're coming from. So I will, I'll leave those comments as that, but that is all that's on my mind right now as we consider this.
I appreciate that. And, you know, this is one of the great things about our council, we're not afraid to speak the truth about what's on our minds, and we carefully debate and take public comment, which is important to inform us as to really, you know, which way we're headed. So at this time, I'm, you know, just again sensing at least two individuals that are ready to move forward with staff recommendation. And I'll go ahead and make the motion that we move forward and approve the recommendation of staff as it stands, and see if that gets a second, and then I'll open for further discussion.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Heading to support staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Heller, and I'll open it up for any other comments. Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, before moving forward with our vote on this, since it's been, you know, since the motions on the floor, you know, before, before I vote on this, I just want it to be said that the decision I'll be making tonight is based off of the community correspondence that I have received that has been overwhelmingly, you know, in support of the opposition of this sanctuary at this time unless the items that are suggested are met. Items one through four, with I think there was one small addition added to that maybe, but, but with saying that, I just want it to be said, you know, on public record that I really hope that our, that people are listening that make these decisions, that NOAA, you know, listens to our requests, because I really feel that it is important for us to get to this designation for the sake of our future generations and, you know, for our planet. And, you know, I think we, as a city, have stated that we think that climate action is important and that it is an emergency. So by my vote tonight, it is not me saying that I don't think that a sanctuary is important, but it is me saying I'm listening to my community, I'm listening to, you know, the suggestions from my, my staff, who is more well-versed in this subject than I am, and that, you know, that there needs to be some sort of change in that sanctuary and that roadmap in order for our city to thrive and our harbor to thrive. So I just wanted to say that before we move forward with the vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford, for your thoughtful and well-articulated position. Appreciate it. Further comments? Councilmember Heller, please.
Thank you. This will be my last comment. I appreciate the comments by everybody, and I think we probably are on the same page with respect to climate change. It's an urgent issue that we have to address. I guess when I think about the sanctuary, I think there are other ways to honor native peoples besides this sanctuary. And I'm not so sure that whether this sanctuary is created or not created is very high on the list with respect to dealing with climate change. I think there are other issues that we need to talk about, and the sanctuary may not be directly related to it, although obviously I am very much in support of understanding and grasping the consequence of human activities on Earth and how we need to get that under control to continue to exist as a species. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I don't want to spend too much time on it, but appreciate everybody's comments.
And I appreciate that too as well. Thank you for that. Okay, seeing no further hands, then I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
I'm going to abstain, thank you.
Councilmember Barton, I believe you're muted.
Sorry. So the, the, let me just get it clear here.
Laurel?
Yes.
The, it's to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Then, yes.
Councilmember Ford? Yes. Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 401.
And again, you know, I, I am just overwhelmed by the respectful discourse and conversation that this council is able to have, and I'm proud of our ability to articulate our positions and thoughtfully consider things that are important, well beyond just our community, but have global impacts as well. So thank you for that. With that, I will move this, I believe we have a quick item, item C-6, consideration of Resolution Number 87-21 for 180-day wait period, exception for calipers retired and militant, interim city engineer appointment, approval of interim city engineer agreement between the city and Robert Livik, and receive engineering division update. I will turn it over to, I believe, is it Mr. Qualick or Mr. Collins?
Mr. Qualick is available to provide an engineering update. If there are any questions regarding the action to be taken as far as the resolution and agreement, I'm happy to respond to those questions.
Okay. So you just, just want Q and A now before we go to public comment? Any questions? Seeing done, okay. I'll go ahead and open up public comment on item C-6. Public comment is now open on item C-6. Any member of the public wishing to comment, please do so now. Do we have any public comment? Anthony?
Hey, thank you, Mayor Heading. I see a hand raised, Betty Winholz. Is there a hand raised? Okay, Betty.
Betty, you're up late. Welcome.
Yes, we all are. This is Betty Winholz again. I, I have an issue with this in terms of the finances and how it's presented, in that it says that there will be a savings. Like, I'm not understanding why we're hiring back a retired person and hiring two new consulting firms, all to do the same job. That seems like it would cost more. And indeed, when you look at the numbers, it says it will cost $108,000 to hire the two consultants, that that will be covered by the savings of the engineer, the retired person being paid less, and yet when you multiply that out, that's $78,000 in savings, but they're costing us $108,000. Therefore, we're really losing out $30,000. And it says that cost will be covered by Measure Q and Measure E. Now, you can do what you want with Measure E, but certainly with Measure Q, the understanding with the public who was asked to vote for that was that never would we pay for a consultant out of that fund. It was for streets, it was for repairs, it was for the fire station and police, never ever was it to be paid to a consultant. And that was made very clear in meetings. So I'm, I'm just at a loss here with regard to why we need to have three people or at least two consultants and the current person doing one person's job, and it's costing us more and it's being promoted as not. And so as a, as the great payer and the person that helps foot the bills along with the other residents of this town, this does not make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Anthony, next public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I currently do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Mr. Qualick, would you want to make a quick response to Ms. Winholz's comment about your fiscal report, the impact?
Yeah, that'd be my pleasure. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I heard two questions, and this one holds comments. I'll try to address them both. The first is, why do we need two consultants? And at the same time, why are we requesting to bring back the city engineers or retired and eminent? The second question is, shouldn't Measure Q funds be funding capital projects, not consultants? So to answer the first question, as many of you know, Rob Livik has been with the city for 15 years. He's not only an outstanding engineer, but he has such a high level of institutional knowledge about the infrastructure, the capital needs of this city. He has a lot of the history that frankly is just not written down. And so in order to do this transition right, and by that I mean in order to set up the next city engineer to be successful, we want to have a complete transition plan that allows us to retain that institutional knowledge that Rob holds, carry it over, and then also bring that to the new city engineer that we're expecting to hire sometime in early March. To do that, we found that the best way was to bring in two consultants, who for the next two or three months or so will take on a lot of the capital improvement work. We are bringing on one that will focus on water and wastewater work, including the Wharf Project, which is something that, that Rob spent a lot of his time on. And then we're bringing in another generalist engineer consultant that will work on things like street paving and speed surveys and wayfinding signage and things like that. And then in that interim transition time, Rob will be assigned to consolidate catalog, compile that institutional knowledge in the form of identifying where the files are, where the plans are, what the policies are that the city follows, because a lot of this stuff has sort of been day-to-day in folks' heads here in the engineering division, but not written down. So that's really the purpose of that structure that we are proposing. To answer Ms. Winholz's second question about Measure Q, as I've just stated, these consultants will be working on capital projects. So I believe that that answers her concern directly.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that very much.
Mayor, if I could add on, thank you, Greg. One, one thing to note, we had intended to secure sort of the capital project lead with a senior engineer.
engineer, or a combination of senior engineer position and existing staff, and we were unsuccessful in our recruitment for the senior engineer position. So that, yeah, fully intended to kind of follow that line of logic that Ms. Winholz mentioned about Measure Q, using staff to execute on our capital projects. We need somebody to do that. We were unsuccessful in our, through that process, and so the consultants are the route we're going to take for now. And that seems to be the calling card for a lot of cities now, especially with the engineering realm, us being in the headquarters for, I forget which district we're in for Caltrans, where they pay thirty to forty percent higher for their engineers compared to the city of Moro Bay. It is a challenge for recruitments.
We call it the high-cost district. It's a little clogged, anyway. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for that, we appreciate it. Thank you for answering the questions, and with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, if anybody's so inclined.
I'll move to approve this item.
Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve C six staff recommendations, second by Councilmember Heller. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Okay, that moves us to item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Anybody bold enough to suggest a future agenda item at this time of the evening? Seriously, if you are...
This time of the year?
This time of the year, right. Seeing none. Thank you very much for a great meeting, thank you staff for all of your work and putting everything together. Want to just wish everybody a very pleasant and safe holiday season. Take some time off, enjoy family and friends, be safe.
Wear your mask.
Wear your mask with regard to COVID, and look forward to seeing you next year. I'll go ahead and adjourn, the next regular meeting of the Moro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, January the 11th, and I believe I should say 2022 in my report. It doesn't, but I think it's 2022, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you so much, have a great evening, be safe and be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.